All right, so we're gonna call the meeting to order, it's about 5:02. And I think one of the first things we normally do is recognize visitors, and we wanna do that. And then I think we'll do the agenda in the minutes, and then we'll come back to the visitors and move them to the top of the agenda if that's okay with everybody. Yes? Can you hear me okay over there, Spoon? Because it's funny.
What's that?
Exactly. Thank you. All right. So, any visitors that are here, we'll go ahead and start with you guys in the back.
Hi, I'm Megan Olshuler, I'm a fourth grade teacher here at Green Street.
Hi, I'm Becky Paloso, I'm a special educator here at Green Street.
Hi, I'm Julie Ackerman-Hovis, I'm a music teacher at Green Street and Oak Grove, and I'm a parent of three kids at Green Street.
Robert Spila, I'm a board member of the Brattleboro School Endowment.
Ellen Chappie, I'm one of the founders of the Brattleboro School Endowment.
And I'm Bryn Tucker, and I'm a teacher here at Green Street.
Okay. So, we can look at the meeting minutes from last week. Our last minutes taken, if I count. Were there any comments or questions also on the warrants?
I just have to find it. Oh, in the workforce discussion at the end, the motion, the action steps that Rob looked at, the teacher education, and that I would get information from the town about the implicit bias training, education, and the administration actively recruit parents of color for the PTOs. The minute said that while I was informing the board of names and trainers, so, and that was actually me, so, change that.
Do you have access to those last times?
I don't think I had, for last meetings, minutes in there.
So maybe we'll have to share again in order to make that update. Any other changes, corrections, additions? Then I entertain a motion for the warrants being approved as well as...
Motion, second.
The minutes. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So then let's move ahead and go on to the visitors. And I know the Brattleboro School Endowment's here, and they were hoping to speak to us a little bit about the Brattleboro School Endowment, and I guess I should mention that I'm part of the Brattleboro School Endowment as well, but I'm gonna leave it to these guys, and maybe interject every once in a while.
I just, I have these, I could pass these around. Now. Shall I stand?
Yeah, why don't you say?
Yeah. My name is Ellen Chappie, I'm one of the founders of the Brattleboro School Endowment, and I just wanted to give you sort of a brief history of how it came about, and who we are. Back in 2009, one evening over supper, Jill and I were whining and complaining about all of the fundraising we were constantly being asked to do, and our children. And, you know, we would sell candles, and then low and behold, the backpacks would come home, and it was time for wrapping paper, and we'd be done with wrapping paper, and oh, the raffle started. So, you know, we totally, we valued all of the use of the money, they were very interesting activities, very great things the kids were doing, but it was getting kind of relentless, and we thought maybe there is a different way, some way we could help in more of a long-term fashion, and sort of approach it from a different, you know, angle. So, this is sort of the beginnings of the idea. And Jill ran with it right away, and we started to create the thing, and, you know, the community members were great, they donated services, John Seacrest donated all the legal work to set up the nonprofit status, and Barb Ackerman set up our website, and Christine Takkas designed our brochures, which you see now, Howard Printing printed those brochures, Joe Pitek offered to do our accounting, and Prentice Smith offered to handle our investments. And all this was done as gifts and kind, so we pretty much started the whole thing without having to spend any money at all. And, so, there we were, we were all set up, and now it was time to create a principal, and Prentice Smith, you know, advised us that if we could get $350,000, then we could, that would be a large enough principal that we could draw out substantial amounts of money to pay for things like winter sports, and other enrichment, field trips, artists in residence, and many other things that were sort of above and beyond the school budget. And so, we set upon, you know, growing our principal, and Rob Spila came on board, he has a lot of experience in his work with capital campaigns, and raising funds, and he will tell you a little bit about what we did next.
Thank you, Ellen. Yes, so Robert Spila, board member of the Brattleboro School Endowment, and I wanted to add, you know, my wife is a school teacher at Academy School, and she has explained to me the situation of a lot of the parents there, it's harder for them to do a lot of fundraising, and it's hard for them to just shell out the cash when they don't have the time for the fundraising, so it, it's a hardship for a lot of the families to have to do, to have to come up with cash in order for their children to have access to the enrichment activities that we all want them to have. So, the Brattleboro School Endowment is a great way to fund a lot of those activities that are harder for families with lower incomes to access. So it's, we're really glad that we're able to put it together, and to date we have a lot of donations, and I would say between 50 and 100 donors. We've begun a founding donors campaign, and some of the common donors in town have contributed, and they're pledging to donate $5,000 over 10 years, Brattleboro Subaru, Richards, the Richards Group, Brattleboro Savings and Loan, and Prentice Smith. So we have a good amount of capital that we're growing, and we're hopeful that, you know, that we can be able to spend that once we get up to the $350,000. Until that time, we've made a commitment to support winter sports, that's been the one program that we decided we do want to support while we're still growing our principal, and so every year we make a small contribution to the winter sports program, and we're happy that we're able to help offset those costs for the families, so that they don't have to come up with the cash, or to send their kids to Mount Snow, or do some of the other great opportunities that they have available to them. So that's kind of how the fundraising is going for the Brattleboro School Endowment, and we're looking for more donations, we're looking for ways to grow that principal so that we can get up to that critical mass, so that we can start to give out the 5 percent interest every year.
One other school board member came in, too.
So, the money, you know, I've noticed, I follow all the money part, and it's definitely as the money has grown, the investments are starting to really grow also, and it's, so the more money there is, the more money you can make, without having to have a bake sale or do any of that stuff. But, one thing I wanted to add was that sometimes I've heard, you know, people will say, "Why do I wanna give money to your fund?", or, you know, "Why do you have your fund?", we already pay for all the schools in our taxes, so, I don't, I think that's a perfectly valid thing to say, and nobody needs to give any money not a cent to our fund, I mean, that's not what it's there for, but, there are people that want to, and occasionally somebody comes along with a lot of money, and how do they know where to give it, where it will go to public schools, where it will be safe, where it will be invested properly, where it will be, you know, used properly when the time comes to actually give out. So, sort of, that is the structure that we have set up, and we now have a vehicle for anyone who wants to give a little extra money to public school kids.
Do you wanna introduce Ellen to, Joellen as well?
Sure, I'm really here to support and listen, I'm a member of the board of the Brattleboro Endowment, and as a community member with two children, what's her name? Oh, I'm sorry, Joellen Tarallo, as a parent of two children who have worked their way through the Brattleboro School District, I felt it was a way that I could contribute through community service and support the work of the schools, given the resource issues the schools face. One of the things that I think is really unique about the endowment is that it's kind of a consumer-driven board, in that the people who are on it are people who are on it because they're really vested in the work of the public schools, and in general have had children who are, you know, students in the schools, and this is a way that we can show support for the school above and beyond all of the many public resources that you must work your way. It's really nice to have some unrestricted funding for a school district, and I think that the communication between the consumer sort of driven representation, we do have school staff on the endowment board, but also the board of directors of the schools could produce some really nice identified priorities and outcomes for the use of the money as it grows. So we, I think all of us who invest our time in it on a volunteer basis, do so because we feel it's a good return on investment for the future of public schools in Brattleboro.
Spoon, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a few. One is, just to be clear, we're here in this because there's gonna be an item about merging endowment funds?
I think that's kind of up in the air that we haven't decided, we're definitely having an item, but when it came up that we did have funding that's set aside, that's not being invested right now, that Frank brought to our attention, it seemed to me that it's good for the board here to know what else is being done in the name of public schools here in Brattleboro, and that this entity already exists, and is doing something similar to what we were mumbling about when we were trying to decide.
Yeah.
And I think, too, I just wanted to clarify, I don't know if we said that we, this, the money that Frank was talking about for us, Spoon, would be, it's in the elementary school funds, but the money that, and we've been concentrating on the elementary school, but the Brattleboro School Endowment's 501(c)(3) and all the paperwork is written so that it can cover all Brattleboro school children.
Okay. One is, I would have appreciated some kind of a little financial sheet, you know, like how much money is there, and what you've done with it, or where, you know, just a one page, one side of one page, a balance sheet or something, so, I understand what we're talking about here. Is, is this fund audited at all, ever? Or is it, I assume it's under the control of the board of directors of the fund?
Yes.
And they have, and that group has a person that actually takes care of all, all the bookkeeping.
We have, we have a treasurer, and then we have, when we do the taxes, Joe Pitek's company does that for the endowment, as pro bono, and then Prentice Smith is doing the investment, so there's three people really that look at the money.
I mean, this is stuff I'd be more concerned with if we were merging other money, but it would seem like there should be some checking balance in there somewhere, and not strictly only one party, you know, this board looking after all that money.
Actually, we don't look after it, we have nothing...
I know, we don't, no. But, it'll be a question if, if we went forward with some merger.
May I add something? I think some form of structure around, you know, decision-making for how the funds were dispersed would be prudent in, you know, defining a structure for that, and that ideally, the point I was trying to make is, I think what has strengthened the initial grassroots work of putting this together, is that it was consumer-driven by parents and community members and staff, and if we were to move to a situation where there was a significant amount of infusion of funds, that it would probably make sense to have an administrator on the advisory group that discusses and prioritizes and makes decisions, and that could be discussed as a structural issue.
We have in the, in the rules there, or whatever it's called for the endowment...
Bylaws.
Yeah, the bylaws do say that the school board has representation on that, and that's all been me, and Mark, actually, until he's left, has always been a part of this group as well.
Can I ask a question, too? It seems like the, from what you're describing, the mission of the group is to fund things that are outside the actual running of the academic programs of the schools at, right?
By law, that's a good idea.
Okay, because that's what I was gonna say, that protects the money, and keeps it under our control, versus, you know, the state having some say in this, right?
It was more because Act 60, at the time, when we were creating Act 60, it was quite new, and Act 60 said, you know, there were people like in Dover and Wilmington saying, "Well, since we have to now fund, all of our education has to go to the state and then come back, why don't we just create an endowment, and we'll pay for all the extra teachers that we can't put in the budget, you know, if we want, in that way."
But that's against the law.
That would be against the law.
There's no...
So, when we set up the endowment, we carefully looked at that, actually Molly Burke helped research it for us at the state level, to make sure that what we're doing is not stuff that's in the budget.
Okay.
So we could, that's why it says specifically, "Funding things like artists in residence", or the winter sports program, which is currently funded only through parental donations.
Okay. So it's all like enrichment type of activities or programs?
Out of the budget.
Just to double-check if what I think is what we actually said we would do is, we wanted to, we decided we wanted Frank to sit down with the town people, and with this endowment people, and talk about how it might be merged, or work together, or...
As I recall it, all we decided was that it'd be good to hear from the board of the Brattleboro School Endowment, what that entity is, which is tonight, and that we asked Frank to check into talking with the town, which he did, and he's not here tonight, so I guess I'll just report what he said to me, which was that he had the conversation with Marshall Wheelock, apparently there's a group called the Trustees of Public Funds, I believe, and they're appointed by the town meeting reps, so there's three of them, and I forget the other two people's names, I could find it if I had to, but I did send something to Hillary, and I never heard back, that I asked her to invite them to come tonight as well, but Frank has met with Marshall, and Marshall was taking the next steps to see if the funds that are at the town level could be transferred over to the Brattleboro School, Town School District, and if that's the case, what all were the steps, he thinks there may also need to be a blessing by the state in order to move that, those funds from the town to the school, but that he started that process.
Correct, that's what I thought we said.
So we, that's about, I think what we've said we were gonna do is about as far as we've gone.
Right.
That's good.
Which is good, but then it would be of us to figure out where we might wanna go.
I mean, I just feel like, without knowing the deep details of the legal and financial aspect here, that it seems probably not a great idea to merge funds, because of the fact that this group has such a specific mission of supporting only enrichment activities, and I don't know if, because of the Act 60, the, the town school funds, like, could that be used for stuff like, you know, repairs, capital improvements, or things like, you know, the social worker, I mean, it seems like it would really limit what we were able to use the money for if we were to put it into the umbrella of this, but the group probably has some...
That's a really good question, Lyle, do you have any idea?
I do not have any idea.
Because it's, I mean, the idea was that you couldn't just have people giving gifts and suddenly inflating your budget out of control with the rest of the state.
Yeah.
I suspect we could not pay for anything that we are presently paying for.
Okay.
Like Title I, it has very specific rules about that, so I suspect this would follow that.
So it would already be limited by the law, anyway, regardless of whether we put it together with the endowment group?
So, in essence, all of the three sources of fundings would probably be limited to the same rules.
Okay. But maybe we could buy more buses for Academy School, to take their kids up the mountain, right?
But we don't, we don't buy buses, we do transportation...
Buy a bus just to get 'em home, and end of the day, it'd be a big help.
The middle school, too. Joellen had something?
As you're talking, I'm wondering if something to think about is, what is the best use of the funds in terms of sort of short-term, one-time investment in something, versus the use of the funds for something that is ultimately sustainable and going to grow over time, and I think that has been part of the, you know, idea of the endowment from the beginning, feel free to pipe up, that we were creating a source of revenue, not just for the sake of a source of revenue that could do something one time, but that it could be a sustainable source for whatever priorities those who determined were the priorities, could be for the future. So it would be around for a long time, and continue to grow, and that those, the kinds of things that it might support are things that are priorities for administration, staff, and community members, but are always the ones that get pressed out of a budget because of, you know, budgetary issues. So that, I think that's something that we could all think about, in terms of, you know, leveraging the money.
Ellen, maybe you wanna tell them what's in there right now?
Our current?
Yeah.
So, total, in the investment account with Prentice is about $57,000, and in our checking account, about $3,000, so 60, close to 60 total. We have pretty much no, we have a post office box, and we have to file an annual report with the state of Vermont, which costs $25, I think it's bi-annual even, so, so we have very little expenses. And we usually run a welcome center bake sale, or do some sort of our own fundraising in order to give to the previous, to the current year winter sports programs, we don't ever, we have never touched the principal. And we did get a sizable bequest early on, which was a pretty big chunk, $26,000.
And the reason for that bequest, I thought was really touching, because the woman said that she wanted to find a way to be able to donate to a lot of kids, and she knew that if she went to the public schools, it would go to all the kids in Brattleboro, so, that was the reason why she chose the Brattleboro School Endowment, she kind of set the bequest up right as we were setting up the endowment, so it was kind of fortuitous.
So if you could look at our September 20 notes, where we talked about this, you asked that question about using endowment funds for paying for things that would typically be covered in the school budget, and Frank said that no.
Okay, okay, so that's already known.
So I think...
And that also covers the, the money that he was talking about that's owned by the school district, right? Or is that just for this group?
That was for this group, but I would assume it means any endowment money cannot be used to, like, we're not gonna pay for the art teacher through endowment money.
Okay.
We're gonna pay for special things that...
Because that's the intent of the laws, that you can't have some rich guy say, "I'm gonna always pay for the art teacher and keep arts going", that's not a good community with support and taxes. So I, I guess I look to the board at this point, if we have any other questions for the Brattleboro School Endowment, and then maybe we wanna come back to this next meeting as to our next steps, if, or if somebody has something for you right now, seems like we're waiting to hear.
Are you waiting for any other information?
Marshall is waiting to hear if that could be moved to us as well.
So, that's in process for you to find out?
Yeah, it can be moved, yeah.
And that, the thinking is that if we combine all these monies, then the investment could grow bigger faster?
Definitely do. Ellen can put together probably a graph even that shows how much we grow as we get bigger.
It is starting to go faster, you know, even a while, but now I can see it every month.
Andy, you want a question?
Well, I remember when you, Jill, and Ellen started this back in 2009, I wasn't at your dinner that night, but I do remember, remember when you...
You were probably being talked about in the...
Great about it.
But, you know, I just wanna say thank you for all your work, and to the whole committee, and sending your audience on your own time, it's, it's great, and it's a, you know, it's a great idea, and all our students have benefited from it over the last several years, and, you know, every year, they make a donation per student, which is supremely equitable, you know, to help to frame the cost of the winter sports program, and that's really important, and that's really valued in our town, in our school district, and every year it's, it's a challenge for us to figure out how we're going to fund another winter sports, and the costs are going up, and we have more families that struggle to come up with the amount of money necessary to do it, so, over the next several years, I'm, I suspect that it'll be more challenging for more families, so, we need, we need this fund and other sources to help us, help families do winter sports.
I will say also, as a current Academy School parent, I find the amount of fundraising that we're asked to do really reasonable and not annoying, so, mission accomplished on that. It's, it's great to take that pressure off of parents, and I'm sure that the amount of money that you're raising is gonna far outweigh what could have been accomplished at the individual family level, anyway, so, very well done.
All right, so thank you, Brattleboro School Endowment, for coming and talking.
Thank you.
Can I just say one other thing?
Yes, please.
Because it occurs, I'm fairly new to the group, and the legwork on fundraising has really been done by the people who started the fund in 2009, and moving forward, and it's a lot of sweat equity on their part, it's, you know, knocking on doors, but it also represents, I think, a commitment and belief in the vision by all of the businesses in town who have chosen to make contributions, and so while it represents a representative group of consumers, so to speak, who are advising the fund and, and school staff, it also represents, I think, a real positive vote of confidence from all the businesses in the community, and the perception that by joining and leveraging funds, that, you know, it can really continue to contribute to the futures. Thank you.
And also, I'm happy to furnish, you know, any of the financial...
And the time.
If the time, when it, yes. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Thank you. We did the warrants, we did the minutes, committee reports, we kinda skipped those last 10, some degree, Deb is not here, her policy council, is she meeting right now, though, tonight with policy council?
They're meeting right now.
It was, right?
Yeah, and she was able to, she didn't think she would be able to, but she was able to, and they're gonna discuss the plans that we talked about and approved for Westminster.
Oh, that's right, we had to approve it first, even though it normally would have come the other way around.
Okay, and I think I copied all of you, but we made sure that change also happened in the minutes, because it needed to be very clear that it was abnormal process, that the policy council wouldn't have seen that first, and since we were meeting, and before them, they, Deb brought it to us first, so she wanted to make sure that was in the... them, they, Deb brought it to us first, so she wanted to make sure that was in the minutes, and she made that correction, and I think we've already made it into the minutes, so.
Is that the updated version?
So that was, I think, yeah, it was the updated version before we looked at the minutes tonight. Um, energy committee, I don't believe is meeting. No? Act forty-six, um, the, the official study committee did meet on Monday night, went over the meetings and the schedules, and also what to be said in the letter that's going out to everyone in the supervisory union. Robin was there for her first-
Yes.
-meeting, perhaps the last of this study committee, the first one.
Yeah.
All right, and then the alternative governance subcommittee on Act forty-six.
Yeah, that committee met, and again, I was, I didn't attend, I was not well enough to make that many meetings in one week, but, um, I did get minutes and copies of some of the things that are being developed. Um, the first part was the discussion of the proposal, the requirements for an alternative proposal, and the goals of the act, and also, uh, what data and information would be financial and, um, other data would be necessary for the successful proposal. And, uh, so far, the, uh, there's been a revision of the, uh, we've been updating the program overview that was in the, uh, that's in the articles, merger, um, and the, uh, historical tax rates, in some cases going back to twenty-ten, but for everybody, going back to, uh, from twenty-fourteen to twenty-eighteen, for those five years. And, um, from the state spreadsheets, a three-year, um, chart of the, uh, best back scores for all the elementary schoo-, the K through six schools. So that's, those are some of the data that's been developed and checked over for accuracy and completeness.
Where are you getting that data? I mean, that sounds like the same data that the study committee already looked at.
Well, you didn't look at three years' best backs, and I'm not sure you looked at five years' comparative tax rates or any of those sorts of things. So I'm not sure if that's, the thing that's the same is the program overview, which just was updated to reflect where things are right now, rather than the twenty-sixteen, the other two, I don't think, but they're not anywhere in the articles, they may have been talked about in the committee, they didn't show up in the articles.
And I think we did look at them. We looked at tax implications, and we looked at, what was the other one, the S-BAC?
The five-year tax indications? Or the non-indications, the history?
We looked at both sides and the history. I remember looking at taxes from both sides.
Oh, great. That's obviously necessary information. And the other was three, the three years of available S-BAC scores, the thirteen, sixteen, and seventeen scores by grid.
And so my question, Dave, maybe you don't know because you weren't there, but is there a plan coming? Because-
Well, there will ultimately, I mean, depending on what happens in, in the vote, if it's necessary to have something to the agency, to the state board before, uh, the end of December, then something will be submitted by whoever, whichever districts are involved in it, and approval. Um, but as far as a plan coming to us for approval or for endorsement or something, not, not yet. It's gathering information and trying to find out what really, what needs to move to a proposal, and let's start drafting a proposal.
So how, is there a feeling amongst this group of, I mean, I keep hearing that there's another way, I mean, that's what the letters to the editor said, there's another way, we don't need to merge, we can do that, so what is the other way?
The other way is to show that the goals of Act forty-six could be met without merging.
Right, so how, what are the steps that are being proposed to do that?
To identify, identify the, in the four areas, the equitable, uh, the quality standards, the, um, achievement gap, and transparency, and show that those, that progress can be made toward those, improving those things, um, through another, another project, another plan, other than merging, through the current supervisory union with member districts, with maybe some contractual relationships between boards if necessary, or sharing of other, you know, just other ways of resolving issues that, that come up. It's not a, it's going to take months to do it, clearly, but, um, you know, at this point, it's gathering information, being clear what the goals are, and we're starting to put together proposals as possible.
But your understanding of the deadline, is this end of December or end of January?
The deadline, it, it needs to be submitted at this point, it's, I think, December, right around April's time. There's been a lot of conversation about extending it into January, but nobody's going to depend on that until it's, you know, there's ink on paper. Uh, so that, the intention is by, by the middle of December to have something that can go with the state board. And, uh, then it's a process of, just like what you said, just negotiating back and forth, back and forth, in terms of development plan that's, that's viable. It doesn't have to be, it's not like the, what you just gave the state board, where you have to take this whole, the whole thing approved. The deadline is just to get it in, and then it's, there's pretty much an entire year to get, to get something approved, uh, by the state board before the, it's time for the secretary of the-
Is there a process that the townspeople would vote on this plan?
Maybe. I mean, I, I can't say, I, I can't, if there's no change to the governance, there wouldn't be any reason for the townspeople to vote on it. If we were going to change the governance structure somehow, then yeah, the townspeople would have to vote on that. I'm certain there'll be some community surveys, because that's just an overwhelming interest to most of the people in the committee, is to get some feedback from the community in terms of what they want from the schools.
Okay, I guess I get it. I'm still, I'm just trying to understand when I see people saying, you know, there's, there's this other plan, there's this other structure, and it's all set, and, but it doesn't, I haven't seen this structure in the plan.
I don't think anybody's saying it's all set. I've never seen anybody say it's all set. There is a structure in place in the statute that says you can do this, as long as you can show that you need to vote.
I guess my understanding from the statute though, was that it had to be like a complete plan, like what we've already put together with the articles?
It's not, it doesn't have to be that in December. It has to be that when we're done. It has to be that before next July, I'm not sure when the deadline is, it might even be November, but not this, but, um, I think it is November of nineteen.
I thought it was eighteen, November of twenty, eighteen.
Oh, yeah, we're in seventeen now, so, yeah, November of eighteen.
So we're in place of-
Yeah, everything is better than like, in nineteen. So there's, there's that amount of time to put that, put those together, but to, is this the intention of doing it in some sketches, some outlines of what people have in mind? We'd have to go to the agency, uh, or to the state board before December to declare that that's the intention. So the other towns would have to decide when they wanted to participate, and, uh, we all have to decide when we want to participate. I mean, having a subcommittee right now to look into an alternative is very different than deciding to pursue.
Right, and the subcommittee is only Brattleboro and Dummerston, there's no official-
Former, yeah, yeah.
So it would have to go back to Dummer, uh, Guilford and Putney-
And Vernon, which we wanted to.
And Vernon wanting to come in.
Yeah, there's no reason they would.
So they would have, and so your understanding would be that the school boards would be able to move this forward, and just the school boards? Not the community vote?
If I understand your question, if we decide that we want to, if the school boards decide to pursue an alternative structure, which would be the current supervisory union with some changes and developments, maybe some different contractual arrangements between, like if we want to do universal, we can contract with each other to, to set up that structure. Anything that required a townwide vote would, would obviously get one, but I don't think there's anything that requires a town to vote, because we're not changing, um, any of the financial arrangements or any of the things that are in our budgets that would require a town being approved, and we're not changing the governance structure at all. We wouldn't not be a school. In this case, we're not, we're willing to not have a school board anymore, to set up an entirely different supervisory district, that requires the top-
Changing to a different school.
Yeah, this is not setting up for a different school.
Still not sure if I completely get it, but okay, I guess it's, until it's, it's not completely thought out, so.
Yeah, no.
Not possible to completely understand this. All right. Uh, finance committee's meeting right now, so I don't think we have anything, and hopefully they took our, I know Kim expressed that, our concerns from last meeting of, we want to see written job description type thing of the executive committee, so I know Kim was passing that back.
What are the other thing about that, Jill? The, um, it was mentioned, uh, there's a code of ethics involved in that transition. Is that different than the code of ethics that we just all agreed to with the school association?
My understanding, when we had the discussion at the finance committee, was if there were, um, issues with the code of ethics, that that would go to the executive board to look at.
And with the code of ethics, it's per-
That's you, right now.
Yeah, it's not a different code of ethics for that group. Okay, great, thank you. That's good news.
Uh, diversity committee, I don't know if you have anything since last week?
Yes, we haven't had any meetings since last week.
Okay. All right, so let's do some administrative reports, since you guys didn't get to do it last time, you just sent around your information.
Well, speaking of fundraising, um, we have a couple of things coming up. We're not selling candy or jewelry or-
Raffing paper.
Raffing paper. So I've never been offended anyway, so, but we, um, we are doing, uh, two. Uh, December thirteenth, um, we are having Academy School Night at Brattleburger, so we are, we give a family's flyer like this, and, um, if they bring that there, uh, with them and their kids, so we're-
Brattleburger.
Brattleburger downtown.
I thought you said Brattleboro, I thought, well, of course it's in Brattleboro.
Brattleburger, take it out, more Jill.
Probably kids will be really jazzed.
And fifteen percent of the proceeds, fifteen percent of the check will come back to Brattle- we formed a partnership with Bratburger, Brownburger, um, so we're excited about that. And, um, on November fifteenth, we're doing, it's like the third or fourth year in a row we've done Dining for Cause with the ninety-nine and Remundos, it's a similar deal, um, they make available to schools and, um, in the community too. Parents go there with a certificate, the pro-, fifteen percent of the proceeds of the meal will go, uh, goes back to the school, um, so, and we're, we're earmarking the, uh, that for student activities and winter sports to help offset. So it's, it's a fundraiser, but it's, we're not selling, it's a good fundraiser in that we're, we're, we're not selling a product and overpricing it like wrapping paper, which you could buy for, you know, two bucks, and we're going to charge five, is typically the way that works. Um, so we're, we're trying to support local businesses, reasonably healthy products, um, I think it's locally sourced beef and meats at our Brattleburger, so.
So there's no raffle this year?
Um, raffle, you mean the basket raffle? Oh, there is, yeah.
Oh, is that going on at the same time?
Um, I don't have the dates for that in my head off the top, but, uh, it's, it's, about to start, yes.
That's usually at the same time as the book fair.
Wow, usually culminates at the same time as the December, whatever, that sounds like.
Yeah, it ends December, around the same time, mid-December usually ends.
They're going to announce it November seventh at all schools, so.
So, so the emphasis with fundraising anyway is, is that, um, we do a main event, and the, the basket raffle is, um, our main event. We, we generally, um, gross about eight thousand dollars, uh, from that, and that's, um, then that goes toward field trips, and some money goes to winter sports. So, um, the one-shot deal, the one, the big event, uh, if it's annual, people expect it, um, and all, all of the engine's going into one thing, rather than running, you know, twenty spaghetti suppers and brownie and cake sales and all that stuff. And, um, the last two Wednesday mornings, we've had family breakfasts. Two, a week ago, we had, um, family breakfast for kindergarten first graders, and this morning, we had for second and third grade families, and, um, um, over the two days, we served, um, five hundred meals. Uh, it's been a good turnout. Uh, coming up will be the family breakfast for grades four, five, and six. And school boards always welcome, just give my name at the door, come right in.
I've attended two of them.
That's how you met the both.
Which day is it?
Um, the fourth, fifth, and sixth is November eighth, I believe, um, Wednesday November-
Is that next Wednesday?
Wednesday, November eighth, it's seven thirty, seven thirty-two, um, eighth, fifth. Pumpkin pancakes.
Pumpkin pancakes.
Turkey sausage, um-
Scrambled eggs, yogurt parfait.
Yogurt parfait, you on the menu!
Yeah. And there's coffee.
Fresh coffee for the office. Happy to have you.
I know Mark really loved that breakfast food, we don't always think of Mark.
Thank you.
All right. Mark?
We have a pretty informative, um, slideshow to present, so won't give too much, but I just, I do want to highlight our Green Street School spelling team. A couple of weeks ago, there was a town competition, and, uh, Green Street Team won for the second year in a row. Very dedicated group of students, um, in fact, um, for that spelling competition, only one word was spelled incorrectly the entire competition, which is quite impressive.
It's intimidating, Mark.
So they'll, so they'll be moving on to, um, regionals this weekend. And I'll save, like I said, it's a pretty, we have quite a presentation, so.
Green Street. All right.
So, um, I don't want to take Green Street's time either, so, um, but I, on my report last time, uh, one of the things under student programming, uh, that it definitely was, uh, could have been part of our, um, diversity conversation, is, uh, last year, Oak Grove applied for Humanities, uh, Vermont Humanities Council, um, grant, and we received that, so our sixth graders are, um, and then there are some staff members as, as well, and some other community adults that are, uh, working on, were reading the book Brown Girl Dreaming, and, and they're setting it up as discussion groups, really kind of like a mini book, um, groups within, within the school. So, uh, students have opportunity to engage with the adults who are reading the book right along with them, so I'm really excited about that. Other things, on Friday, this past Friday, we did our annual Grovey Walk, the whole school walks, um, this year, we, because of our, um, our, our little pre-K feat, we decided not to walk all the way down Fort Dummer, we walked across the street, um, down the hill to the baseball field, and once we're down there, then we break up into multi-age groups, um, so then they're working with pre-K up to sixth graders in small groups, and relays, and parachute games, and, um, popsicles, and different kind of things, and then we walk back home. So that was on Friday. And today, we had, um, visit from the Caterpillar Lab out of Keene, and, um, so that was, uh, that was, did I say today? I don't know what today is. Yesterday, I think they were there.
Yesterday.
Anyway, that was, that was pretty great. So, um, and lots of different, uh, field trips that are happening. Yesterday, I was at Deerfield with the third grade, Old Deerfield Museum. Uh, tomorrow, we have, uh, third and fourth grade heading down to Latches for the orchestra. Um, I think there's some clown town things happening, there's just a lot of, we're busy, you know, a lot of classes are pretty busy, so.
Sure, I think I ask you this every time, but, or at least once a month, how's the preschool?
Preschool's good, you know, I mean, they're, uh, they're getting into their groove, I mean, you know, the first month of us is a little like, oh my heavens, uh, you know, they are little, and, um, but they come in and, um, they have the routine down, and coming into all schools singing, and, and having their breakfast. I think I also added pictures on my report, so you see that our two, um, new pieces of pre-K equipment that, um, were brought in, because our playground, ground equipment is rated for six to twelve, and you can have four-year-olds playing on that type of equipment, but it requires a different type of level of supervision, of course, um, and so they were thrilled. We had, um, a climbing wall and, um, another smaller slide, so, I mean, it's also great for the community, because we're right there in the heart of the, the neighborhood, so community members come in and, um, parents stay with their little ones and able to, to play, so, um, it's not the, the boulders that Andy has, but we're very proud of our new additions to our playground.
First time.
I'm not sure if it's as much room.
No, we'll, we'll let Academy keep the boulders.
All right, so we'll jump over to, I think, unfinished business, Act forty-six, we kind of covered in our other discussions. Update on Westminster, EES, I think is happening right now, so there's no more update there, but we didn't want to lose that. Update on implicit bias training, um, research for teachers, you have anything from one week?
Still searching.
Okay.
Working on it.
Update for- Update for, on dates for gender?
Yep, so I did confirm with, with Carrie Smith. December 20th, I believe, was the day we asked, whatever day we asked. That's the day she said. What I do need to know, though, is what you would like her to focus on. So last time, I have my notes here. I gave you a couple of suggestions of things that she would be able to do. It can be, she called it 101 of creating gender-affirming communities, to something more thoughtful, more in-depth, whatever it is that you would like.
I think you had mentioned last time one option that had something a bit more like school-specific. And I think that would be great because I think there's some kind of different ways this plays out when you're dealing with young children.
And I know she has done, she's done that with some other schools and the WSCSU looking at school-specific things, so.
There was one thing I want to bring up that is not on the agenda. Is this an appropriate time, or?
Let me jump to, we have update on town training and then yes.
Okay.
Town training was on harassment and not diversity. But I did get a list of the, some of the providers of diversity training that Peter had received and I forwarded on to Lyle.
And Rob and I have a time set up to meet and talk about.
Yes, maybe beginning of November, we're going to chat about it. The other thing I wanted to bring up was I had been hearing some rumblings from other parents around town that there's some confusion or discomfort around the way that disciplinary actions are handled in the schools. And I remembered that a few years ago, I had come to an informational meeting here, I think actually it was, about that where they talked about the policies and stuff. And I was thinking maybe it would be a good time to have another one of those again.
That was probably one of our most interactive meetings, as I recall.
And I think not just, well, discipline and then just the whole approach to behavior.
Right, it was kind of, it was in this room.
Because it's all the same as much.
But it was very practical and easy to put your mind around because they gave really concrete examples.
Yeah, I still remember that it was like 95% happens on the bus or playground. That was like my takeaway from that.
David, do you have the work plan there? Do we have open dates that I can try?
Well, we, for the 15th, we've got just the budget session and curriculum overview.
15th of November?
15th of November, yeah. December 6th, we have the budget, we'll always have budget.
Let's look at January.
And then the Academy Antioch Program and then it's Academy Night. And then the 20th is Gender Affirming Communities, so we probably wouldn't, probably think of that. And then January 3rd is pre-K. January 17th is wide open. There's nothing on that.
That was the one last time you were like, let's not put anything on that.
I know, but that's why. That's okay. All right, so under new business, Rattle Burger School Endowment, we've already done. Green Street, I'm going to just make sure we don't have anything else so then we can go to you guys and stay right with that. Board meeting scheduled for the supervisory union. David was concerned that we've got a couple times where we're back, we're first, and then the supervisory union is meeting in our, after our next two meetings, I think?
It happened the last one, it's happening two coming. And Kim, the finance committee, is tight, so it's a lot of things are being.
Actually, Kim is not. She chose to not go to either of them, but she would have been, yeah.
Yeah, but still, it's another, you know, it's, it's on top of, and I don't recall nine years separating. I mean, usually ESU was after somebody's meeting in a different school every time, but not on the same night.
So I did talk to Barb and Lyle about changing their time for starting to 6:30 for the supervisory union as opposed to 6:00. So that would give us from 5:00 to 6:30.
And then we'd have to drive to wherever the meeting is.
No, usually meeting that for us.
They just keep coming around?
Well, and actually, because there are people coming from the south, they would prefer to come here.
Oh.
There are more people coming from the south than here, then.
So I'm wondering, David, if, if we could make it that it's okay for these next two meetings so they don't have to adjust and find times again?
Well, again, the January 3rd meeting is, is on pre-K and Act 166. And we're inviting people to come in and talk about it, you know, our pre-K partners. So I would really hate to have that time constraint.
The next ESU is December 6th, I believe.
Well, the one after that is January 3rd. Because I know January 3rd is one of the states.
I don't remember having an ESU one on January 3rd.
December's, at least, one of the memos that came along, the one that said that they rescheduled, that it was the one, it was the minutes from the last ESU meeting. That eventually, December 6th and January 3rd. I believe it's 6th and 3rd.
Have you heard that, so the ESU meetings are on there?
December 6th is the budget in Academy.
Okay, so while Lyle is looking that up, I'm jumping us one thing ahead and then it's the last thing.
It's February 7th is the.
If there's not one on January 3rd?
No.
So I guess my thought, David, if you think it's all right, is that we try to go, they moved to 6:30. We don't change the times around or the dates any more than that. But ask them that perhaps maybe next time they can try not to be.
On a first or third Wednesday.
Yeah, not always on Wednesday.
Not always on our meeting nights.
Yeah, absolutely.
But not to have a move this one.
Yeah. So it's December 6th and February 7th. Okay, thank you.
All right, so we do need a Rattle Burger Town Capital Review Committee. There's supposed to be two people assigned to that, and we appointed only one for some reason. I don't remember who we appointed. Spoon. So someone needs to be on that committee because it makes the town happy to have two names.
The Capital Review Committee is a really interesting committee because it never meets, never has to meet.
So why don't you want to?
Somebody has to come along, somebody has to come along and propose a new housing development or something. If it's going to significantly impact the schools, then we would have to go and listen and see whether you thought that that was a good idea.
Are you on that committee already?
No, it's been explained several times because nobody ever wants to do it. So it's not, it's not a demanding committee if somebody's.
I'll, I'll do it. If it's the committee that never meets, I'll be that person.
Okay. Spoon and Rice.
It says you're on there.
Okay, Andy has something for us.
So we can just go back to a moment ago, it just wasn't clear. So are you scheduling, do you want to schedule a forum on January 17th? Or are we presenting to you on the 17th about?
I thought it was the same thing and we just have people come in if they wish.
Is that what it was before?
To me, a forum is very different than we, than we have a conversation with you about student behavior and discipline.
Yeah, the thing, the thing that I was remembering attending was a forum. It wasn't an invited school board meeting. It was just like the principals and other people that worked in the staff and other programs like that, talking and explaining about how it worked.
That's what I was envisioning, that we'd have Shelley and Greg come and maybe a couple of staff.
And hear about something like there was sort of justice and the other things that are, that's all part of that, the whole scope of what, of what happens. And I, but I think though, I'm not sure what the difference is between forum and board meeting, but I think if we were going to do specifically that topic in response to people, we want, we want to have at least a press release and some notice going on.
The difference in my mind is that what you're now discussing is that an opportunity for, for principals, for staff and so forth to present what, what we're doing in response to the behavioral challenges, emotional challenges that students come to school with, how we manage that, how we're addressing that, how we're helping kids stay in classes and, and be in a position where they can learn. So that's great, and, but that's very different. My viewpoint is a forum where people come and they're hearing their concerns. And the forums that we held before were more of that. And I think if you're talking about that presentation.
Okay, I, maybe I used the wrong word then. It, it seems like there is a need for some direct conversation, whether you want it to be like people bring concerns and you answer, or you guys just explain what is actually going on. But the, from some conversations I had, I could tell there's a lot of misconceptions about it. And I think it would be a good community strengthening, with community-school connection strengthening thing, to have something where people could come in and hear how it works and ask questions.
So let's do the forum piece with the presentation and then leave enough time for interactions and questions so that people can get clarity if they have misconceived notions. Does that work?
Sure.
I think he's drawing at a section between presentation and forum.
And, and response to.
Whether which, which thing are we calling this?
Right, so it's a very different, it's a very different evening. It's a very different extent of expectations that, that one has had coming in as a parent or as a community member. Are they coming to learn about present best practices? Or are they coming to express their viewpoints, their thoughts, their concerns?
I think a presentation would be good, but allowing a lot of time for questions from the people that attend.
I would want to make sure that a parent doesn't come in and say, well, you did this to my kid. That is a little bit different than.
Right, I think maybe that's what, what the concern was about having a forum, that it seems like it's more like, let's all debate what the best way to do things is, instead of a presentation where you're just telling them, here's how we do do things. But, you know, I, I can't imagine a situation where it would be like, no questions, goodbye.
Yeah.
You know, I think that would just be naturally inherent in the presentation.
But we do pay people who are extremely highly qualified in behavior and behavior analysts. So, yes, we want to hear what parents have to say, but I don't want them to come in with the understanding that this is how they want it to be because this is how they want it to be. Because we have very well-qualified, highly-trained people working with us on behavior.
But that's why I think that we need this because I don't think that there's a wide understanding that that is the case.
I think a couple of things. I think a presentation with feedback and give and take is always helpful. But the other thing, hearing things from parents on the street or in the grocery store. To me, the first reaction, go talk to the building administrator is really important.
Yeah, well, that's what I have mentioned when people have brought me directly into this conversation. I just said, if there's something you're unhappy with, you should talk about it with your kid's teacher. If you're not satisfied with that conversation, talk to the principal. But the fact that there was a number of people who had something to say about this made me think that maybe a community conversation would be better than just me telling people, talk to your kid's teacher.
They should be there first, too.
Okay, so we, I, I thank you, Rob, and to that, we talked about this briefly. And I, that's one of the hard parts of being a school board member is how to get that out. And I think this is a great way to do it, which Robin came up with on her own. So we're clear on the presentation, time for answers. And perhaps even, Rob, and you might want to have some, to avoid the situation Lyle's talking about. And, you know, of course, we don't want parents to feel like they have to put their public, put their child on public display. But if there's specific questions that somebody would want to use as like a case. So we could certainly have that written down and we could use that in the presentation.
I mean, I don't want to take up too much more of this time right now talking about it, but I think that one of the things that is unclear to parents, because if they hear about something from their kid who's like five, you know, it's not always the most accurate depiction of what happened at school. And so that's where things are getting lost if the kid was like, I was, you know, taken out of class today. What happens in, and why, and what is going on in the situations where kids are working with other people outside their classroom?
Okay. I think that takes care of everything on others. We are going to start with a tour, Mark, or no?
I want to start with the, let's start with the presentation.
Oh, presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Eugene, you okay with that?
Yeah, I forgot to talk about that at that last meeting completely. I didn't make sure I said it to. Yeah.
I checked out the presentation as highlighting our after-school program, so I just brought brochures for board members' reference points.
Well, Bryn's setting this up. Again, I just want to introduce myself. I'm a fourth grade teacher here at Green Street. My name is Megan Alshuler. I'm also a parent of a Green Street student.
Kelsey Manwray, third grade teacher here at Green Street.
And I'm Bryn Tucker. I'm an academic support teacher here. This year, I'm supporting fourth and fifth grade here at Green Street.
Mark Spino, principal.
And I'm Becca Coliso, I'm a special educator at Green Street. And this is my 16th year at Green Street School.
So first of all, I want to thank the board for this opportunity to kind of, well, to tell our story over the past three years. You know, we get an opportunity to talk about our schools at board meetings and our principal reports. But I began to think that the school board maybe didn't necessarily have a big-picture idea of the changes that have happened here at Green Street School. So as we dig into the first slide, it's, it's about the growth of our school. But I think truly it's about a school transformation. And I feel like over these past three years, three-plus years, we're entering our fourth year, we have transformed the school in many ways. And where we're going to emphasize this transformation is through these five themes, okay? So the physical grounds of, of the building, culture and collaboration, the social and emotional climate, accountability, fidelity and follow-through, and then academic performance. This is, you know, a data meeting as well, so we have data to support what we're going to be presenting tonight. But I wanted to give a clear picture for, of the changes that have happened. When I started the summer of 2014, the physical grounds were dated, not kept up. The building, in my opinion, was in shambles in many ways, not very well organized. The culture of collaboration within the school, there were pockets of greatness, of great collaboration. But as a school systematically, it was not systematic. It needed a lot of help. The social, emotional climate needed drastic attention. Accountability and follow-through needed to be established, fostered. And academic performance needed to improve. So throughout these three-plus years, we have put a tremendous amount of effort into transforming our school. And we're really pleased with the results and where we're headed. And these ladies and myself have put a tremendous amount of time and thoughtfulness into this presentation. So if you have questions, please raise your hand. But it's a pretty thorough slideshow of our development over the last three-plus years. So to start, in my opinion, in transforming a school, the easiest thing is the physical aspect of the school. All you need is money and a vision. And first of all, school board, thank you for the money in supporting our, our ideas. So this was kind of the easy stuff to change. So to start, in three sections here, technology overhaul, safety and efficiency upgrades, and aesthetic improvements and new construction. Those are some of the things we're going to, I'm going to highlight. First one, technology overhaul. So the summer of 2014, walking through the building, taking on my brand-new school, our classrooms were basically chalkboards. We had two interactive boards in classrooms and one projector in the library, this one right here. Now, in 2017, very short amount of time, every classroom in the building has an interactive whiteboard as well as all teacher offices and workspaces. So we have, I think, 22 spaces with interactive whiteboards. We had 20 MacBooks on a cart that was shared amongst the entire school for students. And we are now one-to-one with student Chromebooks. Basically, every kid has a Chromebook if they want to use one. We have iPads in all primary classrooms. We have an iPad cart that any classroom can check out. We revamped our gymnasium. We revamped our gymnasium with a stage and projection system with an electric screen, a state-of-the-art sound system to foster interactive PE classes, school plays, performances. It's a state-of-the-art gymnasium right now. We had updated teacher computers, we had some teachers with new computers, many teachers working with computers seven years old. Now, today, all teachers have, certified teachers have new MacBook Airs within one to two to three years old.
Are you on a rotation then too?
In twenty fourteen, coming in, there was no technology plan in place. Now, we have a dynamic school website, which we've revamped, social media representation, you can now get us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. We have an onsite technology integrationist, we have a tech committee that meets monthly and has an ongoing plan to support all of these changes. So, two different worlds. Moving on to safety and energy efficiency upgrades, this section is about increasing the climate and comfort of our school. So, things that we've done in process are wood, new wood chip impala boiler with climate controls. We're just about to the end of that project, so we're very excited about that. New fans, new window treatments, which actually will be installed over the next two weeks. And energy efficiency lighting, we're progressing through that throughout the building. We've started in our hallways and now we're moving to classrooms. We have a new fire alarm system, we've added some fencing in the playgrounds for safety and security reasons, new security system, exterior lighting. We've also overhauled our playground. New construction and aesthetic improvements. We've had a concentrated effort to improve the grounds and appearance of the school. Our school garden is enhanced, our flower beds are cared for, are thriving, we have welcoming benches that we've added, we've built a retaining wall to help with the infrastructure, and in the interior of the building, same thing. The entire color scheme of the building has been changed to a more open, welcoming color, friendly color. All of our, ninety percent of the flooring in the building has been changed. Basically, the library and the school office are the only two places left to be touched. So, we've made a significant amount of money, but also time, energy, and thoughtful planning to revamp the physical appearance feel, structure of our school, and that has brought more pride in our school community. Each school year, as we start up in September, I always have lunch with kids, at least three days a week, I have a lunch with a group of children. And each September, the conversation with those students is the things they notice, the new stuff that they're noticing about the school. And I think that says a lot, and they're very appreciative of those things. So, the next phase, we're going to hand it over to Bryn to talk about cultivating growth.
One other thing too, Mark, to add about the construction of the school, I'm not sure if you mentioned, I had the privilege of working at Green Street many years ago before the birth of my daughter, and then coming back last year. The learning center spaces have been totally revamped as well, so we used to have all of our intervention groups in a huge, open, somewhat distracting space to try to do intensive intervention. And as an interventionist now, I really appreciate that there have been specific learning spaces that have been created that I think are really supporting students' growth. And we've transformed closets and book areas and copy areas into really thriving learning spaces for kids across the building, so I wanted to add that as well. So, culture and collaboration, as I mentioned, I worked here a while ago, I think, starting, actually, this was when Mark left to become an administrator.
Bryn replaced me as a fifth grade teacher, and it was an instant upgrade.
I don't know about that. And then I had the privilege of working with Green Street for many years as a data coach in the district, so it's been interesting to see the growth of the culture and collaborative nature here at Green Street over the years. And I'll say it's a true pleasure coming to work here now and working with the teams that I do, I think I personally have experienced, and I hear from many teachers here that there's a real increase in terms of how that feels to come to work each day and how it feels to support the students in the community that we're working with. So, a few things that we're going to share with you under this heading of culture and collaboration include how our team structures work, what that looks like, the leadership model here at Green Street, and then also some of our professional development initiatives and supports that are in place, both for students and eventually for teachers. So, our teams, we have grade-level teams, we have vertical teams as well that we work in, and we have a lot of supports that are in place for us within those teams. Each month or every six weeks, we have extended planning time within the core classroom team and then with support specialists as well, where there is substitute coverage with great activities going on for kids, while teachers can come together and for a lengthy period of time, really plan out curriculum, field trips, learning interventions that students might need coming up. So, that's something that's very helpful, I think, for putting the structures into place so that we can run as a pretty well-oiled machine when we come back to our classrooms. We have six academic support teachers and, correct me, Becky, four special educators in the building. And we support across tiers, and we'll talk to you a little bit more about that, but we have kind of our tier one, or what everybody gets. And then a tier two for kids who need something a little bit more or a little different, and also a tier three for some intensive intervention. And so, we have support across all three levels, so our specialists are not just pulling kids out in small groups all day, but there's really kind of a blanket of support across all kids in the school. In addition to our extended planning times, each team, as I know all the Brat Town schools have, I believe, we have weekly time where kids are in specials and extended blocks, so teachers can also have team meetings during that time. Because of all of the technology upgrades, we have a lot of collaborative lesson planning, so for example, I co-teach math in two different classrooms. And because there's not tons of face-to-face time every day, often we can plan through Google Slides or Google Docs to really work together to bring the best experience that we can to kids. And we also have a lot of technology support, so Greg Montgomery is a technology integration specialist that we share with Oak Grove. So, there's lots of infusion of technology activities and collaboration amongst projects with kids. So, those are some examples of how we're collaborating to assist students here at Green Street.
So, the next topic we're going to talk about is distributed leadership opportunities in our building. So, the first bullet says leadership weekly meetings, so we have a leadership team who meets every Wednesday morning before school to discuss some of the big things happening at school that we all need to be aware of. So, we will send, talk about that information, you know, maybe make some comments about things that we think should happen, and then those notes will go out to the whole school so they can see, oh, this might be what's happening this week here at Green Street. The action plan team meets the second Wednesday of every month, and we are really in the process of just digging into our action plan right now and working really hard on it. We've been working on the math piece, because we really had to focus on math, which you'll see later in the presentation. And we're going to be looking at more of the behavioral piece and literacy focus. The next one says the step team, so we talked about how we have a behavioral interventionist here at school, we have an intensive needs case manager who works on our step team, and then we have step paraeducators who work with students. So, they're really supporting the behavioral needs of all of our students here at school, and they help teachers as well. So, for example, last staff meeting, Greg Stoller gave us a presentation about some tier-one focused behavioral strategies that we can all use here at school. And it was a great refresher, and it was just like really great in-house professional development for all of our staff. And then the last one up there, we revamped this year kind of our staff meeting model, so Tuesdays after school, we have staff meeting. And this year, we really changed it to more of a focus around professional development, so I just gave the example of Greg Stoller with professional development around behavior. And so, it's more focused for the staff's needs. And the next area that we have been working on is professional development initiatives and supports. And the focus here has been to really build capacity and expertise within our staff to support the needs of students and to support one another with our work. So, rather than just one person going to a workshop and coming back, we've been working really hard to make sure things are happening more at the staff level. So, I'll just talk a little bit about some of the initiatives and the supports that we have here right now. So, we have regular data meetings, which I believe other schools in Brat Town will do as well. We have our data meetings, which are really focused on solution-oriented work, looking at where students are and how are we going to move them forward. And we're using a lot of coaching from Brian Bettner, who's a literacy coach, and from Paul Smith, who's our math coach, to really help us go forward with our instruction. One of the initiatives that we've worked on, and this will be our second here with this initiative, is called ESIC, which is work that we're doing through the Vermont Agency of Education around improving math instruction and outcomes for all students. The focus originally was around students with emotional disabilities, and as a school team, we decided to take that further and look at how we can improve instruction for all students, because what's good for, one, you know, we can really make improvements with our instruction globally, rather than just targeting one or two students, and that has been really powerful work, which we'll talk more about, which has really transformed how we're providing our math instruction to school life. We also have an external systems coach, which has also been part of this ESIC project, Judy Maynard, and we'll talk more about her as we go along, but she's providing some work around co-teaching, coaching us with content, and also with intervention and classroom coaching. So, she's coming into the classroom, she's going to do some work, looking at how things are, you know, happening in the classroom, then meet with teachers later to look at how to improve practice, kind of reflect on what's happening.
Just add to that, a model that we're moving to this year is using our winter sports weeks as professional development days as well. So, we're going to do five weeks of winter sports this year, and when our kids leave for the afternoon to participate in winter sports, Judy Maynard is actually going to be here each day, full day, for those days. In the morning, she'll be observing in classrooms, providing coaching on co-teaching, and then when students leave to go to their winter sports, that time will be used for direct PD and work, collaborative work with our teams. So, that's a new model that we're supporting this year, I'm really excited about that.
Again, just another way that we're really trying to include the whole staff and make improvements, and the initiatives be staff-wide, rather than just select groups of people getting the training. And then the final initiative that I want to talk about was a resiliency training that fifteen people from the building attended just recently, it was a two-day training. And this again is a model where it's a train-the-trainer model, so we, the people that attended the workshop, went to learn how to come back and bring this information to the staff and help build capacity within the staff to support students and families who are living in trauma. And that is an ongoing initiative that we'll be working on throughout this year with Joel's coaching.
But it'll be a focus of our action plan development this year, because I think that's something that all schools, especially Brat Town, are facing. Trying to get ahead of the curve on that.
So, as we talk about all these initiatives that we're putting out, we need a chance to see each other doing what we do. So, as a classroom teacher, it can be a little lonely, in the sense that you are constantly on, and you are surrounded by these amazing young people who can be really challenging. And you're also surrounded by these amazing teachers, but without really systemically finding ways to go and see how these other teachers are doing what they do, it's almost impossible to learn from each other. So, we created this peer observation model to make a change at a systemic level. So, I'm just going to ask you to sort of, this is the way I sort of think about this, imagine that it's your kid's birthday, right? So, your kid comes to you and is like, I want to have a dinosaur birthday party, and you're like, great, and they're like, I want you to make a cake, and it's got to have a volcano on it, and you're like, oh, okay. And so, what do we do? You panic for a second, right, and then you go to Pinterest, and you see how all the other parents out there are doing this for their kid, and they're making the cake with a volcano. And suddenly, you're like, oh, there's a recipe, there's some instructions out there, I see someone else has done it, I can make this happen for myself. And so, you take all these great ideas that you go see out there, and then you make it work for your kitchen. You go in, you're like, great, but my kid's allergic to that, and I don't have this in my kitchen, but I have all these ingredients, so now I can make the cake with the dinosaur and the volcano. Right? You see someone else who's doing the best of that, so you make it work in your kitchen, and so that's what this is. So, we are surrounded in this school by incredible teachers, but if we don't have the opportunity to go see them do what they do, there are these tiny things that people are doing all the time to differentiate and make it work for everybody. They are making changes in their classroom that are so subtle that completely shift the behavior within that room, that increase engagement. And until we get to go see them do it, or like student teaching once for a semester in college, like doesn't do it, we've got to keep seeing each other work. And so, we want to, we created this in order to get everybody to open their doors, and invite people in, and invite yourself into someone else's room to see how they're doing it. And we created this model, we don't need to go through every aspect of it, but this was really well thought out, and we had support from our external systems coach, who's worked in all of these different schools, to see how we can do this in such a way that really make people say, come into my classroom, I want you to come see me teach, I want you to look at this one aspect of how I'm teaching and help me make it better. And so, and it's never marked, so it's never evaluative. Val, did I say that?
Yeah.
So, it's never evaluative, it's always an increasing collaboration, increasing conversations, and getting us to say like, oh, I love how you did that thing. I can go back to my kitchen, my classroom, and with my kids and my ingredients, I can make it work. And so, basically, we've got this amazing Pinterest board of awesome teachers who get to learn from each other in order to make our school better.
I think, Megan, another piece of that too is that our students experience greater consistency and greater understanding of what's going to be happening within the school environment, because we become, not monotonous, but we're able to pull on the best pieces of what's happening grade to grade or across classrooms. So, it becomes a more safe and predictable environment, I think, in these teeny-tiny ways overall, that I think we're starting to see manifest in some of our students and their behaviors.
You also own all of the kids, you know, you have your classroom teacher, you have your classroom community, but if you're spending time in other classrooms throughout the building, you know, and other kids see you in other classrooms, it creates more of a community and more ownership of all the kids, not just the fifteen to twenty in your classroom.
So, the next, the third piece that we'll be talking to you today about is the social emotional climate here at Green Street, so how our students are feeling about being here at school. So, the three pieces underneath social emotional climate that we're going to touch on are student supports that we have in place here at Green Street, the behavior data that we have on Swiss, and then lastly, our school climate and parent survey results. So, you'll see some information that we've collected from parents over the past year probably, and information from students about how they're feeling, things are going at Green Street.
So, one of the biggest areas is supporting our students and how we do that. And so, it's great that we have all this, this great curriculum, we're like, great, we adopted this curriculum and that curriculum, and we've learned how to use it, but there's so much more. In order to get kids to access that curriculum so that we can eventually increase the likelihood of them gaining knowledge, is we need to support them. And so, what that looks like is these, we sort of broke what we do here down into these five categories. And we want, so social emotional supports looks like actually adopting different curriculum to help create positive social community members as they move out into the world. We have an impressive list of community partnerships, really engaging programs, sorry, that's okay. Engaging programs that go beyond our classroom, and so that they can access what's happening in the classroom. We have to create safe spaces here for them to engage with other adults in the building. Student leadership, this is opportunities for students to practice these positive social skills that we're teaching explicitly, so that they can practice being leaders here, and then go out into the community and be leaders, and then a closer look at what our behavior supports are here in this building and how we do it.
So, our social and emotional supports, we have a school-based clinician here at Green Street. She works with students in classrooms, she has small groups, really focused groups, lunch groups. And then she's also brought a therapy dog in, which you can see in the picture, who our students love. And the therapy dog really is just a way for students, a different way for students to be able to relax and talk and work through things that might be challenging in their life.
to be able to relax and talk and work through things that might be challenging in their life. And then some of the curriculum that our school counselor focuses on, the We Care curriculum, the Care for Kids, and then we have the Social Thinking curriculum, which is a kindergarten through second grade curriculum. And then the Mind Up curriculum that she's implementing, which is a kindergarten through sixth grade curriculum for all students.
We've made a number of community partnerships over the years. As you can see, the list, I need to go into great detail on all of them, but NEYT, it's well documented, the Town School Theater program with all three schools. Big Brother, Big Sister partnership, we have a very close partnership with them. We have BIGs coming into our building all the time, each week. Police Mentorship Program, the BIGs in Blue program. Police officers in the building with little buddies that they work with. Also visiting classrooms as well. Girls on the Run, Attendance Council, I mean, there's a long list here. I'm not going to get into all the specifics. Tracy Benet-Perrin, our school counselor, I think is one of the most involved public educators in trauma-based practices. And she has made a lot of connections with community partners and brought them back to our school and vice versa. And I don't think I would do her justice by trying to explain all of these partnerships and how they work intrinsically. But she did, I did, she did mention to me today that a later board meeting, she'd be happy to visit with the board along with our ECRS clinician, Erica Salome, to talk in more detail about some of these partnerships and how the focus on trauma-informed supports for our students and then for communities as well. Our after-school program, super proud of the development of this program over time. When I first got here, we had an after-school program. Lots of kids were participating. The sole focus, for the most part, of the program was on tutoring, which was great. But kept thinking that we're missing out on something. You know, six and a half hours of math, science, and reading, and then another hour at the end of the day. For a lot of these kids, I just felt like it was just another, you know, pound in the nail, and are we really getting what we wanted with that time? So we started to explore the concept of like enrichment for everybody. Like, let's think of our after-school program as an opportunity to provide immense experiences for any kid that's interested. And we'll continue with tutoring. But at the same time, let's not set any limits on what we can do in this program. So we've, I encourage you to check out our brochure, but we have an amazing range of opportunities that we're offering our students this year. Seventy percent of our kids participate regularly. So we're basically here till four o'clock most days. And, you know, again, I just, I really, I hope you take the time to take a look at that pamphlet, because it spans all aspects of enrichment and engaging thoughtful programs for kids. Super proud of it, I think it's incredibly dynamic, and I think it's a model program, for sure.
Mark, when, Mark, when it comes time for the March information session to the town, I think these are perfectly great things to have, setting out from all of the schools, but stuff that shows this is another part of what goes on in our school day?
Yeah, all to do that. You know, another focus of the program was, we put a lot of work in the beginning of the year to provide a pamphlet for a school, a year-round approach to it. So as a parent, when you get this brochure in the end of September, beginning of October, you can choose, you know, three different sets of enrichment activities that your child can do for the entire school year. So I think it's a really nice resource for our community, and the kids love it. I'm going to tell the story one last time. Each year, we'd have an election for student senators. And each year, we have kids who are heartbroken because they weren't elected. So what we do is we, we honor them with a pizza party, because they took the chance, they took a risk to become a student leader, and it didn't quite work out. But we still want to hear what they have to say about their school, just because they didn't get elected. So we have a pizza party, we open it up, open the table up. The kids talk freely about what they think should change at the school. In many ways, these kids then end up working alongside other initiatives. We have a food advisory council that a number of these children are going to be participating in next week. But one of the comments, little girl in fourth grade raised her hand, and the topic was, "What can we improve or do more of?" And she said, "After-school activities." I said, "Well, tell me more about that." And she says, "Can they be longer?" And I said, "Well, why?" "Because we love them so much." So it was just, I see it every day, but it was very reaffirming. And the other kids at part of that party were nodding and agreeing.
A piece to add to this is that students might participate or need to be referred for tutoring. Because the schedule's three days a week, students can perhaps tutoring one or two days and still participate in original activity on another day. So it's not just happening one or two days a week. We really opened it up to try to make sure that kids were able to participate in a variety of different opportunities after school. And that's happening, many kids are in tutoring and also in an extra activity after school. And that's been great to share, the participation is really high.
I think in addition to that too, I've been really impressed at the enrichment happenings that occur within the school day here at Green Street as well. So our PTO has been very involved and doing a tremendous job with fundraising. And last year, we had a school-wide theme of flight. And so throughout the year, there were all of these different age-pergrade activities of enrichment coming to the school, both within the classroom curriculums, but also with external folks coming in. So that even that thirty percent of kids who are not currently involved in the after-school activities had a chance to experience some form of that. So we've had a lot of, you know, this year, our theme is discovery and exploration. So there's a lot of nice connection in terms of that as well.
So the next topic is student leadership. So Mark just touched a little bit on this with our student senate. So we have a very active student senate. It's made up of four students from third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and sixth grade. Four students per grade. And they meet monthly, they do great projects within our school building, in the community. And they're constantly looking for ways from other students in the school about how we can improve Green Street, what we can do to make it better, more fun, et cetera. Our restorative justice team, fifth and sixth graders who work with Tracy on some problem-solving at school. I think they were the team who implemented that buddy bench that you saw a picture of. Or it's not a picture up here, it was a bench outside. But that's out on our playground, where students can sit if they need a friend at recess. And students are trained to know, "Oh, we should go over and ask that student to play" if they're sitting on that buddy bench. So they do really need activities to make sure that all students feel comfortable at our school.
We're doing a mix-it-up day next week, sponsored by Restorative Justice.
Yeah. Buddy classrooms, so there are buddy classrooms. So for example, I teach third grade, our buddies are kindergartners, fourth grade and first grade, second and fifth grade, and then our sixth graders kind of work with all of our classes. They're broken up, so there's like three sixth graders per class that work with the buddies. So our buddies work together on projects, they meet. For example, today we had a PBIS celebration, we did that with our buddies. We did a project with our buddies, and then we went and we watched a pumpkin video with our buddy and enjoyed some popcorn. So it's a nice time for students to work with students that they might not otherwise, you know, become friends with or help throughout the school day.
Just about the buddies, I've seen some of the, some of the most, kids who have the most social challenges are often at their most shining moment. When you say, "All right, your job now is to be the most amazing model you can be for this younger student." And over the years, I have seen, without fail, every year, there's a couple of kids, "Oh my God, that day when they were hanging out with their buddy, just the way that they helped them through this struggle," or whatever it might have been. Kids really step up in this, and because so many students have gone through being the little buddy, and they know the magic of a big buddy, they really own this in a way that we could never ask them to do without being in charge of something.
So just the last two up there are Food Advisory Council that Mark previously mentioned. And then lastly, Destination Imagination Team, who meets and competes with other schools. So as you can see, we have a ton of different ways for students to become leaders within our school community.
So the next area in the social-emotional category is talking about our behavior supports and what we have in place here at Green Street. So if you see the triangle there, this represents kind of the multi-tiered systems of supports that we have. In the bottom layer is the tier one, which is what we provide for all students. And in that area, we would consider our curriculum and our teaching staff, which we have talked a lot about how much wealth of knowledge and expertise we have here at Green Street School. We have team-based planning, and at that time, we do spend time, of course, planning curriculum, but also talking about students' needs, you know, behavior supports, family needs. It's a really great time for us to be able to get together and talk about students that we share, and how we can best support them in their learning in school. And then the bottom piece is, we have PBIS. So we have positive behavior interventions and supports school-wide, where we have school-wide expectations that we teach and reteach and reinforce all the time for all students. So then, at the next level, we have something called targeted behavior support. And that's for students who might need something a little more than just that level one. So maybe some students who are having a little bit of a challenge in the classroom, who might need, you know, to check in with an adult, or have a buddy to eat lunch with. We have a planning room here at Green Street, and Kathy Bloom is our planning room teacher. And she's an amazing resource to everyone in this school. And kids really respond well to her, and she helps them, the teacher and the student, with a program called Check-In/Check-Out, where they might have a goal that they're working on each day. They have a form that they keep with them in their classroom, and it's broken up into little sections. So after, you know, they have literacy, if that went well, and then, you know, their goal was to stay in the classroom, raise their hand, be respectful, that, you know, they can earn points. And so throughout the day, they're earning their points, and they check in with Kathy at the end of the day, reflect how the day went, make a plan for tomorrow. It's really powerful, kids really love it. It's also a great way to communicate with families about how a student's day has gone. We also are learning through Joel and the trauma training that we have been working on as the reflection tool, so helping kids kind of reflect on if they've had a problem, maybe with a peer at recess or something, how to reflect back on that. How did they handle it? What could they do differently next time? How were they feeling? How was the person? Could they think about how the person they had the interaction with, how were they feeling? You've used that a little bit, right?
Yeah.
Finding it to be effective.
It's been very insightful. I used a form a bit just this week, talking with a little guy who's having a hard time, and he was saying, "Yeah, this is just, I'm having trouble feeling engaged in school right now." And it was this amazing thing that a fifth grader was able to use those words. And so immediately, we as a teaching team got together and we said, "Okay, well, we're going to plan. He gets a positive break if this happens, and he loves Legos, and the art teacher has already volunteered to have some time with him designing horror story sets." So we're really trying to find what were the interests of this child. But I think having some tools that we're going to be working this year to roll out system-wide, each appropriately, is really helpful to be able to understand what kids need and how we can help support that.
So I think the key from tier one, basic classroom management, to tier two is more targeted instruction. So kids who need more targeted assistance with behavior.
And then finally, the tier three would be the intensive, students who might need a more intense level of support in order to be safe and successful in the classroom setting. And we've talked a little bit about our STEP program, but primarily, the intensive behavior supports are surrounded in that STEP service area. In that area, we have a behavior interventionist, we have a special education intensive case manager. We have an applied behavioral analysis intern who's also here supporting this year. And the staff there not only supports students, but is really building the capacity for teachers to support students in the classroom and to learn strategies and skills in order to support our kids. They do a lot of consulting, they come in, do an observation, then meet later with us, and really help us to think about ways that we can improve our practice. Is there anything more you want to add to that?
I was just thinking about, what you brought up earlier, about maybe some misunderstandings within the community about what's going on in schools, and why certain things are happening, and the deeper understanding of these systems. And it almost seems like what's needed is like another entire sort of information session on just what's happening within this, so, and to maybe dig a little deeper within this, is that?
Yeah.
I think we're kind of all in here too. I think if you do examples, like this is a tier one behavior, this is a planning room behavior, so we understand when they move from one to another and what types of things might happen, with specific examples at different ages even.
So this is getting into some of the data, and this is behavior data. So the green bar represents the school year of 2013, 2014. And as you can see, that's really unhealthy.
Those are officer referrals?
Those are office discipline referrals. So these are students sent to the office.
And this was before you had a planning room?
This was the year before I arrived.
Like twenty kids a day in April came, that sounds really intense.
But is that before you had any behavioral systems that you were just showing us, the tier one, two, and three, or what was in existence before?
I'm not even going to really speak to that school year, because I wasn't involved at that point. But what I'm trying to show you is kind of what things looked like on a day-to-day basis in 2013, 2014. So when I arrived that summer and looked at that, I knew exactly where I had to start my focus, working with the staff. And it was on keeping kids in the classroom. It was on tier one classroom management strategies. It was on having really difficult conversations around embracing a can-do attitude, like, "We can do this." And it was tough, it was tough work, and there was pushback, and there should have been. Because when you experience a school year with this type of data, there's probably, you probably have your own trauma about what's happening. So, you know, we did the hard work, and it's ongoing work, and we're still doing it. But, you know, 2013, 14, there was like over 2,000 office discipline referrals. I think last year was like 150, or 180. So drastic, systematic change. And that comes with, you know, mindset change, it comes with accountability and fidelity. It comes with, you know, a team of people deciding to, "That's enough, we're going to change this," and do it. And I think a lot of the previous slides that we've already showed helps tell the story of that change. But this is the data that I wanted you to be aware of that supports the transformation, part of the transformation of the school. Right now, the month of September, we averaged less than one referral day, which is terrific.
So we've talked about the team structures and collaboration that are in place, and we've talked about how we're supporting students, and we've talked about the change of behavior data. So the adults in the building are thinking like, "Okay, this is going pretty well." And every spring, we survey our students as well in grades two and up, Mark, is that correct? In grades two, three, four, five, and six, to say, "Well, how are you feeling about school?" And so that often also tells a story over time about what students' perceptions are of their experience here at Green Street. So this graph is showing the last three years of climate survey results. And again, these results are from students themselves. And this particular slide, which is, it might be hard to read, it's also in the packet that we handed out there, I think it's page four. Just shows some of our biggest increase items. So for example, in 2015, only three-quarters of our kids believed that teachers gave them feedback on how they were doing in school. So only three out of four kids. Which has increased to ninety-four percent last spring of kids believed that, you know, their teacher didn't give them feedback. Another huge change item is, "My teachers treat me with respect and listen to my ideas." From eighty-three percent, eighty-three percent of students believing that a couple of years ago to ninety-five percent this past spring. Only sixty-eight percent of our kids thought schoolwork was challenging a couple of years ago. That's up to seventy-nine percent. We feel great about that growth, but there's also, you know, we look at this as a staff every spring too, and as an action planning committee, and say, "Well, what do we want to tackle next? What seems most important?" What seems most important now to take a look at?" But on average, of all of the questions that are addressed in that student climate survey, which I believe are about 30, we had an average increase of 6% growth across the board just in the last couple of years. So overall, our students, even young students, are telling us that they're seeing a perception of those changes. We also have some results in that climate survey that we feel really, really proud of as a staff. So 99% of our kids think that their teachers believe in them, that they can get good grades by working hard, that they have friends here, that they can get help with their schoolwork if they need it. They feel that they know what they're supposed to be learning, that they have a huge increase in opportunities to be creative here at Green Street, again, speaking to some of those enrichment and after-school programs. 96% of kids believe that Mark cares about them. And a lot of our kids believe that teachers listen to them and respect them. So it's great feedback for us to get as a teaching staff, too, of what are the kids thinking that they feel about this experience. And as you know, we also get feedback, actually, starting next month, from parents about how are we doing? So we, yeah, go ahead. Sure.
Could you comment this one here, but I didn't see it up there? "My schoolwork is challenging," and that's the only one that's significantly below the others. Can you speak to that for a minute?
Sure. So we included this on this slide mostly because of the growth. We had 11% growth in that category. So while on average, we're growing about 6% more favorably in each of these categories, that was one of the categories in which we did have substantially more growth. We're 11% higher in thinking that schoolwork is challenging over the last few years. And that is the one where it's a little bit lower than the other categories. It's actually not the lowest on the student climate survey. Often, that's the bus question. So it's something that we're still talking about as a teaching team, but yet feeling pretty excited that we've seen that much growth in students' perception of the challenges of schoolwork. Yeah, but absolutely, still absolutely in our action plan.
So you don't know why the kids only 79... I say only 79, that's growth, but everything else is like 94 and 5. So you don't really know why yet that as many, 21% of kids don't find it sufficiently challenging.
I think it's a great question to dig into deeper with our second through sixth graders, but off the top of my head, I couldn't speak for specifically why the students, why only 80% or eight out of 10 of our students would say that. So it's a great opportunity for us to explore deeper. Other questions about these? So we also survey parents about their perceptions of how it's going at Green Street for their kids. And it's a survey that has, parents can rate a scale of one, two, three, or four on how they think that students are doing, four being a strongly agree. And the average of all of those survey results, the blue bar represents the Bratboro Town School average. So back in 2003, all of the parents in Brat Town who took this survey, the average survey response was 3.56, which is actually incredibly favorable. Like, out of a score of four, we're, you know, almost there. But this is Green Street comparison to Brat Town in 2013. So as you can see, if you took the subset of Green Street parents out of that, Green Street parents were lower in terms of how they felt overall about how it was going at their school. And you can see the change in that over the last four years of that parent survey. Where in 2015, that changed slightly. So Green Street parents were saying, "Actually, yeah, we feel really favorable." And we've gone from an average score of 3.4 to up to 3.67, and then last year, 3.61. And on the left, you can see that Green Street's averages are pretty consistent with Brat Town and also with the WSCSU district as a whole. So again, we care about how staff feels, we care about how students are reporting that they feel, and obviously, we care about how parents are reporting their experience. Does anyone have anything to add about that?
No, I just think that these data points that we've showed from referrals to student, the way students feel about the school, the way parents feel about the school, I think it's really powerful. And I know that as a staff, we feel that way because, you know, we're doing dynamic work and we're getting the payoffs, and it's a nice, it's a great place to come every day.
So finally, I just took a couple of the, you know, parents, many parents who filled out the survey also wrote a little something on the survey. And these were two really powerful quotes that I, when I was going through them and we were talking about them, and we felt were really important for people to know that at this school, families feel welcomed and supported, and that we're not just providing, here, providing instruction in reading and writing, but we have families who are homeless, who feel like they're being supported and feel like that we are giving them what they need, food, you know, helping them with resources, providing a stable place for them to be every day, and also, you know, just feeling that they're welcomed here and that the children are feeling welcome. And you can feel it when you come in the building. And like I said, I've been here 16 years, so I've seen lots of changes throughout the time that I've been here. And, you know, it's always been a place I'd love to work, but I will say that it feels, the energy here is amazing. And the number of parents that are in and out of the building on a regular basis, volunteering on the food program, with the Four Winds program, the garden. It feels great to have so many parents want to come here and be a part of the school.
So again, we wanted to talk about, you know, the story of our growth, but I think it is really about the transformation of our school. And you don't get any of that without accountability and follow-through. And I think this is a really key aspect of this slideshow. We have, you know, I've set expectations. Staff have risen to those expectations, have had accountability of their own actions and of each other through peer observation, co-teaching. We've increased the game, and people have stepped up. You can say all these great things and have all these great ideas, but if there's no accountability, follow-through, and fidelity, it doesn't change. It doesn't transform. So I think this section I'm, you know, really proud of because our staff has taken a really big challenge and embraced it and have made great change for our students.
So over in the left-hand column, you'll see THEN, and these are four topics that we're going to talk about that were kind of 2014, 2015, things that we identified maybe as some problems here. And then we're going to address how we have changed those and what the end result has been. So the first one, it says, "No literacy curriculum," and our math curriculum wasn't Common Core-aligned. So when I started here in 2014, the beginning of this presentation starts in 2014, we had no literacy curriculum. And I remember stepping into my classroom and thinking about literacy time and thinking, "What do I teach?" Like, there's nothing to go off of. I have the standards, but from there, where do I go? What order do I move in? And it was overwhelming as a first-year teacher, thinking about, "What do I teach?" Now, we've thought about that, and we've said, "Okay." The first year I was here, actually, Mark gathered up a team, and he said, "Let's look at some reading curriculum that's out there, let's go observe other schools, and let's implement something so that we are all on the same track, K through six, and we know what to teach each year for literacy." So now we have the Reading Street program. And then for math, our program is now the Eureka Math Program, which is Common Core-aligned, and we've done a lot of work around that, and it's a super powerful program, in my opinion. We also have Adopted Language Live, and then EPRI, which is Enhanced Core Reading Instruction, K to 2, two newer programs that kind of meet the needs of some of our other learners. The next one on the THEN side said, "Many students were stuck in their academic tracks." So there were students who were typically in the classroom for lessons. There were students who were typically being pulled out during that Tier One instruction time, and they were always being pulled out. So we moved to an MTSS model, and now we have all students in our classroom for Tier One literacy time, that Reading Street curriculum I was talking about, and the Tier One math time, the Eureka Math. So all of our students are being delivered the same instruction. And then during our Tier Two and our WIN blocks, which we'll talk about, students are getting more of those academics tailored to the needs of them.
Eric, could you just explain what is the MTSS model?
So, does someone else find it?
So that's the, there was the triangle that we looked at. And we'll keep coming back to it again. There's like, and so like, the, just how do we embed the supports within the classroom instead of constantly pulling kids out who are needing either enrichment or significant supports?
It's called multi-tiered systems.
Yeah, now, when you say that, and then now I go away from it.
That's our fault.
Yeah. Oh, so THEN was a less collaborative work environment, which sounds really negative. And it wasn't that, so I started here the same year as Mark, and it wasn't that I came in and like, no one would talk to me. I felt like people were offering me support and helping me out, and they were there, I went to them. But I had to find the time to go to them. There wasn't necessarily systems in place in the fall to do that and to have that collaboration and to work together. And now, we can have the best intentions in the world, like, you can be like, "Whoa, in third grade, they're doing this super awesome thing." And I can say, "I wanna go check it out and figure it out," but ultimately, I have to figure out on my own time how I'm gonna go figure that out. And so with the structure changes, with peer observation and co-teaching models being what we do on a daily basis, it's an organic process. It's embedded that we are collaborating. And so that's where we are now, that we are working on with co-teaching and peer observation. We're in each other's space, whether we like it or not. We're there, and we're learning from each other. And so there was some focus on sort of excuses of why students were not achieving. Like, "Oh, this incredible trauma has occurred, so that's why this isn't happening." And that was the end of the conversation. But so through data meetings and changing the conversation and looking at, we were extending beyond that. So, "Hey, here's the reality for this kid, right? They're recently homeless, or this is happening in their life, or that is happening." And now, all the Brat Town schools are dealing with this. I'm sure all the schools over the state are dealing with this to some level. But the conversation has to change from, "This is what happened," being the excuse, to, "This is what happened, so now do we put, how do we put supports in place to move forward" and continue to have super high expectations for all of our kids in a supported way. So that it's not just like, "Oh, bummer for that kid." You know, now we really have systems to support all of them.
This next slide is kind of a systematic look to show you how we do that. And again, we're entering budget season, I just wanna emphasize how important it is to have these academic support teachers, special ed teachers, of course, classroom teachers. But we've created a system where we're, I feel, really effectively using all our staff and providing dynamic support for our kids. So the greeting boxes represent the amount of time the students in those grade levels are in Tier One literacy. So they're getting Reading Street, Reading Street instruction, Enhanced Core Reading, the younger grades, Reading Street in the older grades. The lighter shade of green is Tier Two. So that's specific skill-based blocks of time, so where enrichment and intervention blocks are taking place. So you can see in those blocks, for each grade level, we have a number of names. And those names allow us to break our kids into our classes into smaller groups to provide that specific instruction they need, whether it's pushing the curriculum, whether it's, or whether it's maybe coming back a little bit and building up some base level skills. The blue shaded area is the time of day that each cohort has math. And as you can see, we made a commitment to this year's schedule. We wanna do, without a co-teaching model. So for each math class, K to 6, at Green Street School this year, we have in some capacity two certified teachers differentiating, co-teaching their math lesson together. So we're very excited about that development. We think it's innovative. We're working on supporting that through professional development this year. But we think it's what's best for kids very strongly. And then this lighter, this shade of yellow, gold shade, that's a block that we created last year. We're using the ACREN WIN for What I Need, and that's a Tier Three block of time. So again, each grade level has a group of certified teachers who are available to provide support during that time. It could be, again, another layer of enrichment in math, or it could be another layer of intervention in math, or reading, or writing. It's just a What I Need block. It's another time that's systematically scheduled within our calendar, within our day, so that we can provide the instruction and that teachers aren't having to race around trying to find time to do this. We've built a pretty incredible master schedule, so that's there. And it takes that planning aspect away from the teachers, which is very powerful. And then, you know, the last part is the academic performance. And Bryn's gonna go through some SFAK data and some SchoolDigger data. But again, I think the academic performance is kind of like the last thing on the tree here because you need all the other stuff to get the academic performance. So I hope what you're, it's been a long presentation, but we're really proud of the work that we've done and hope that you've gotten a sense of the systematic changes that we've made that have improved not only academics, but social competencies, health and wellness, and just a feeling of wanting to be a part of something really great. So I'm gonna turn it over to Bryn to talk about some academic performance.
Actually, I'm just gonna open the class. So we are really working on, like we talked about before, meeting the needs of all of our learners. So through that WIN time, through that Tier Two time, and just some programming that we have in place to do that. So some of the literacy programs that we have here at Green Street are Language Live, Enhanced Core Readings, that was that EPRI that we were talking about in kindergarten through second grade, Reading Street, kindergarten through sixth grade, that literacy reading program, Spelography, another literacy-focused program, Rewards, literacy-focused, Wilson, so that's a program being delivered to students who kind of meeting an extra layer of support in literacy, and that would be happening during that Tier Three or Tier Two time. And then lastly, we have a Maple Leaf Writing Program.
As you can see, it's getting started.
Oh, yes, it is. Run by Diane Fouett, the enrichment teacher here at Green Street, for fifth and sixth graders to do some really extensive writing projects. And then in math, we have our Eureka Program, kindergarten through sixth grade, Common Core aligned, as I spoke of before. We have that Common Math Planning Template and Schoolwide Co-Teaching Model. And then we have the What I Need, the WIN block, happening 30 minutes, either three or four times a week, depending on the grade and the schedule and how we could fit it in.
Kindergarten Observation. I saw something about the Language Live. You should try to teach kids to speak without using the words "awesome," "incredible," and "amazing." Actually, have to find a word.
Although, those are improvements from good and cool, so. Levels of support, yeah. So Green Street, speaking of math, we were invited, we were invited last year by the Agency of Education to be part of this ESF pilot, which stands for State Systemic Improvement Plan. And a large of that primarily was because of our poor math scores and our high level of percentage of students with disabilities. And so this was a pilot project that the Agency of Education was doing and got grant-funded to work with some schools. There were three schools chosen, invited, to be involved with this. And the goal over there is they used a rigorous selection process, thinking that they were choosing the schools that had the potential for the greatest impact on student outcomes. And I think it's been an exciting project in the sense that it really transformed some of our movement last year into some more school-wide systems that really, as Becky was speaking about earlier, were focused on supporting all learners. So even though this particular project had a subset of data they were looking at of students with emotional disabilities, we really embrace that of, "How can we support all students here for increased learning?" So that's been a big driver of some of that work that I think now is happening. We're replicating that in other areas, other academic areas as well.
So we've mentioned a couple of times having the opportunity to work with the External Systems Coach, and that's Judy, the smiling person there next to Mark. And we said, you know, we just wanted to share this quote, and I believe that you have it in your packet. But basically, I'm gonna read it to you. "From the start, I knew that this group," I want you to imagine her speaking. "From the start, I knew that this group of educators at Green Street School had good heads and hearts, meaning they are skilled, inquisitive, open-minded leaders and learners who always have the best interests of the students and their families at the center of all that they do. They truly believe that all students can achieve high standards." And I just wanna like underline that, that there's a belief that all students can achieve high standards. And as you saw from one of the shifts, that that is not something that was necessarily happening. And there has been amazing teachers, but with some of these other things in place, those beliefs have spread. So there's people like Becky who've been believing that for this... So there's people like Becky who've been believing that for the 16 years that she's been here, but without the support of every single other person in the school having that same vision, it's really hard to see that go too far, that far. And again, intentions and belief can only go so far. And so additionally, they have a can-do attitude, building on strengths to move forward as a system. So I emphasize those three words because in my decades of experience, if I do not actually have decades of experience, would you do us? As a teacher, administrator, coach, and provider of professional development, particularly in mathematics throughout the state of Vermont, I rarely found this to be the case. So again, there's the belief that's there, but without these tough, it has not been an easy process to do this. But really rigorous systems have been put in place in order to ensure that all of these great ideas are actually happening in real time with fidelity and with follow-through and accountability. So we have mentioned the math planning template. And so that is one of the things that came out of this, is we said, so we said, we need to have a Common Core-aligned program. And district-wide, I believe, we adopted Eureka. And so we did some pilots here a few years ago before it was adopted. We were like, wow, this is a really incredible program. There's, it is aligned to all of the standards that we're supposed to be teaching, which is incredible on its own. But what we found with Eureka is that it's dense. I mean, I'm working on Module Three right now, and it is this thick. And I don't have this many days to teach it. And so one of the big things, this gift of this time with the ESF project and working with Judy Maynard, is that we were really able to unpack the curriculum and focus on just the essential components. So looking at K six, we started by identifying non-negotiables at each grade level. What has to happen? What is non-negotiable? It has to be taught. It has to be, this knowledge needs to be owned by students by the end of this grade. And so by looking at that and sort of moving back into the curriculum with that understanding, we were able to really unpack and create systems within our school that we're still working on in order to meet those standards. So by increasing predictability, increasing consistency across grade levels, we again touch on this idea of like trauma and resiliency, that if what Kelsey's doing in her classroom, and that's those systems are in place, those kids are going to come to fourth grade, and they're going to have those same systems in place, and they're going to go to fifth grade, and the same systems are in place. So you don't lose as much time in the creation of systems and in the teaching of a brand-new thing. And this actually came out of, there was a significant cohort of students that were underperforming. And they were in Kelsey's class, and over the summer, I went to her and I was like, oh my gosh, how are we going to make sure that these kids who, you know, how are we going to just hit the ground running with math? Because they've got to be multiplying fractions, and they're still understanding equal groups, right? So how are we going to do this? And so she was like, oh, I do these slideshows and blah, 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 blah. They can really see it in real time. I was like, great, show me how, I'll do it. So we started doing this, right? And then we brought it to the school and we said, here's some things that are working. And then this team looked at this and they said, all right, what are like, what are the essential components of a math lesson? What do we have to make sure that we're doing? And let's make sure that K six, every classroom is doing this. Every single classroom is, has a consistent and predictable routine, not boring routine, but consistent and predictable, so that we can address more of the standards and more of the needs of the room. So with this co-teaching model, we are able to meet, and this planning template, these are systems, to make sure that all of the classes, K six, are having really clear objectives. What are you supposed to learn today? This is what we're going to focus on. And having the students really explicitly understand and state that, this is what I'm supposed to do today. Today, I'm working on area perimeter. That is what we're doing. We are going to focus on that. And as a teacher, it's really good for, you know, it's easy to get lost in the weeds a little bit. And for me, it's really good to be like, all right, I'm stating this, I am writing it down, I am putting it on the board, I am saying it out loud. This is what we're doing today, and I'm not going to get lost in this other stuff in the curriculum. And really, we wanted to increase the amount of time the students were engaging with the work. And so Eureka is really awesome, but it doesn't allow for a lot of play. It doesn't allow a lot of time for students to touch the math. And so we have created this to tease out the really important parts and then add in whatever flavor in your kitchen that works for your students. And so that was part of what we were doing here.
And I think to build on what Megan's saying too, I think a big part of not just saying we're doing area perimeter today, but like by the end of today, you will understand how to find perimeter of any given shape. And then a big component that I see a lot of teachers across the building doing is the next-to-last element there in the template, which is an exit ticket. So teachers are looking after every lesson, okay, did they learn it or did they not learn it? And then the support teachers working that class say, well, here's the few that didn't learn it yet, let me do it again. Or they've all got it, let's move on. So that's been another important piece of, you know, we're going to look at S-Back data in a minute, I promise. But I think even more than that is the daily use of data that I see so many teachers using in their classrooms to inform what happens next and how to support kids. So how do we measure progress? We've talked about so many ways that we've measured progress so far in this, and thank you for bearing with us, in this long presentation. And absolutely S-Back that our third, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders here at Green Street take is one of those main components. And there was one year of kind of pilot S-Back three years ago. Now we've had two consistent years of S-Back scores that we've tracked with matched cohorts that we're going to share with you. It's a big culminative, culminating assessment that kids do. It's for some of our kids, you know, third graders, they're learning to type and they're writing essays on the computer when they do this. So it's something that we're looking to infuse within our instruction throughout. And I think it's also something that we keep in mind as educators. I know teachers, and I think I speak for most teachers, feel a tremendous sense of pressure of how well are my kids going to do on the S-Back this year? You know, we're looking every day at the exit tickets and every week at the assessments that kids are doing, and every conversation and the whole picture. And yet sometimes it's really challenging to have this one test that kids take six times in front of a computer and then say, okay, well, how is your school doing? Because how are your S-Back scores? So it's something we're definitely still working on. Yeah.
Could you go over that again? You spoke a little too fast. You said something about scores and tests.
Sure. So our students in third through sixth grade take an assessment at the end of each year, each spring called the S-Back. It's the smarter.
Hold on.
S-Back.
S-Back.
S-Back. So it stands for S-B-A-C as the acronym, and it stands for Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium. Yes. And so many of the states in the United States that adopted the Common Core standards have also adopted a way to measure whether or not students learned those Common Core standards. And currently, there are two kind of wide-scale summative assessments that are used to measure that. And one is the S-Back, S-B-A-C, which students take on computer. There's a literacy component and there's a math component. Some other states are doing a different assessment called PARC. They're supposed to be, give the same kind of information of whether or not students achieved the Common Core standards. So we're going to share some S-Back results here from Green Street. Does that answer your questions, Bryn?
Yeah, it's getting warmer.
Okay. And I think I'm making the point that that's one way that we measure how we're doing at Green Street School. How strong is our academic performance? What do our S-Back scores look like? And I think it's something that we as teachers are constantly looking at as one piece of the information to give us feedback about that system. So there is a website that I am sure many of you are familiar with called School Digger Vermont. And we took a look, it rates all of the schools that are reporting information in Vermont in different ways. So for last spring, for Spring 2017, one fact is that Green Street School had the 10th highest poverty rate in Vermont. We were 10th out of 171 schools in the state of Vermont in terms of referee and reduced lunch percentage. And Megan spoke earlier about that not being an excuse, but that being a reality of our population here at Green Street School. And unfortunately, there is often a challenge with students who are coming from trauma or coming from poverty, sometimes having an achievement gap. And so that's a reality of what we're facing with here at Green Street School. Within those 10 schools in the state of Vermont that had the 10 highest poverty rates, Green Street was the second highest in terms of our academic ranking. So of our 10 most impoverished schools in the state of Vermont, Green Street was the second highest within that band. And within that band of 10 schools, we had the most academic improvement in our S-Back scores. We had actually increased 29 rankings. The system ranks all of the schools from one to 171st in terms of where are you at in your academic performance. Additionally, of those.
Question.
Yeah.
Can you, can this scale, or this graph be compared to schools that are middle income and high income?
Yep, there's all sorts of ways. And I encourage you to go onto this website, it's called Vermont School Digger. And you can click buttons and sort schools in all sorts of different ways to look at that.
Including other states?
Yep. Within the 171 schools that were rated last year on that site, Green Street had, was the 18th in terms of our improvement. So we were 18th out of 171 in terms of the improvement of our academic performance. So not saying we were the 18th strongest school in the state, but in terms of our improvement, we were 18th out of 171 schools represented. So in 2016, our ranking in the state of Vermont was 130th. And then last spring, our ranking increased to 101st in the state of Vermont. So it's kind of like a global picture of where we stood within that system.
And that's a combination of math and.
Yeah, overall. Any questions about that? So some specifics about some of our cohorts here at Green Street. Here's one of our cohorts. This is a match, this dataset is showing matched cohort data. So kids who are here both in third grade and fourth grade, and those were the two years that they've taken this S-Back test, because those are the two years it's been available. So in third grade, of all of these students, only 18% of these kids were proficient in literacy. So the red is indicating an achievement level of one, or the most basic achievement level. The yellow is indicating an achievement level of two, or nearing proficiency. Green is a three, it's proficient. And the blue bar is representing a four, like exceeding the expected proficiency rate. And you can see in, in third grade, we had 18% of this particular cohort was proficient, with essentially basic reading and writing skills. So as a classroom teacher, talking about that triangle and a tier-one triangle to inherit, when you have less than one out of every four kids proficient at their grade level, it's a lot to inherit as a classroom teacher, as a system, to try to bring these kids up to grade level. After one year of instruction, and it's not just representing one year, it's talking about all of the things they've gotten up to that level, of course, too, because they're making gains every year in ways that aren't always measured by S-Back. But we doubled essentially our proficiency rate in literacy with this particular cohort of kids. So there's still a ton of work to do with these students, and we're doing it daily. But this is an example of all of these things that we have put in place and what we're trying to achieve and are achieving with them.
Do you feel, or is there any data on if third graders tend to underperform on these tests because they're being asked to like type essays? I mean, I have a third grader, if I said to him, and he's very bright and loves the computer, but if I was like, could you type one paragraph about something? It would take him like half an hour, and then he'd be like, on the second sentence, he'd be like, I quit, it's too hard.
So I teach third grade, so yes, there are a lot of meltdowns when it comes to doing that. So we're really trying, like right at the beginning of the year, starting them on Typing Club, getting familiar with the hand placement, working into, you know, right now I'm having some of my kids type up some paragraphs that they've written. So I'm like slowly working up to that, but sometimes it's still not enough. Yeah, they're pecking away at the computer, trying to type an essay. They're discouraged, and they go on to the next question. And it's, you know, sometimes it's not indicative of how well they could have done on something if it had been pencil and paper.
But what I want to emphasize is the reality of this cohort is that significant needs. And we have Ames Web data as well, which is, I put more stock in Ames Web because we're progressing. I'm showing the progress throughout the year. Significant needy group of kids. And I wanted to show this slide because they've made tremendous gains. And sometimes if you're only looking at that red bar and you don't know the story in between, that gets lost in the work that they put in and the teachers put in. But to go from, you know, 18% proficient, one out of every five kids, to 35 in one academic year is a tremendous amount of dedication and work by kids and teachers and school systems. So that's why we wanted to highlight this cohort, and they're going to continue to do that.
It's an exceptional cohort. And so to see that growth within that cohort is no small feat.
I think also to address your question, Robin, when they're scoring these assessments, and I'm not the person doing that, so I don't know all of the ins and outs of that, but they're norming that data based on how all of the third graders who are taking this assessment across many states are doing.
So their idea of what counts as proficient is, has that added in a little bit, that like they're third graders and they don't have a type right?
Right. And so people, there's groups of educators who come together to form the assessment questions and try to lay out the criteria of what makes you proficient within these bands of kinds of questions at that particular grade level. So I think that is taken into consideration, too. And as Kelsey was mentioning, it is a reality when children are suddenly in front of a computer, asking to be, you know, showing what they know in that format, which is often different than how we're interacting with them for the majority of their instruction. So that's a piece of that as well. Same cohort here. This was their increase in proficiency in both literacy and math. And so the red line is illustrating the growth in the math, which was more conservative growth from one year to the other. But important to highlight that we didn't lose any ground in the math, as we were also increasing our proficiency with the literacy. Another story, this is our current sixth graders. So as third graders, we had about 50% proficiency in literacy with that group. And you can see the red and yellow bands there. Then as they moved to fourth grade, again, about 50%, 48%. And then one more year of instruction, we bumped up to 70% proficient last year. So we're working hard. There's not a, he says, we as teachers, you know, look at this, we don't ever say like, wow, we've got 35% proficient there! You know, I think.
It's actually really demoralizing, we get that. But if you don't dig deeper and understand, you know, the whole story, it's misperceived. I think schools can be misperceived and kids can be misperceived. And I think that's part of what we wanted to show you tonight, is how we're trying to transform and are transforming our school to support all learners in many different ways. Isn't the next cohort, the one after this, Bryn? You know, we could have just focused on this cohort, which, you know, some of the best scores in the SU in terms of literacy, we want to give, see, you know, both, both examples of success.
At a fifth grade this week, we're dividing decimals. And he's in that fifth grade cohort that we're talking about. The head's on the desk, and he's so frustrated. He's like, I just can't get it. I'm not going to get it, and I'm having such a hard time in reading, too. And I looked at him and said, is anyone here giving up on you? Like, are any of your teachers giving up on you? And I kind of picked his head up, and he's like, no? I was like, well, you can't give up either, you know? And so we had this conversation. And today, he came in and he sat next to me during math, and he's like, this is really hard, but I'm going to keep trying, because I set a goal that I'm going to learn how to do long division with decimals. And I don't know how he's going to do when he takes the S-Back this spring in terms of long division of decimals, but it was a pretty magical moment to see that kid who was absolutely giving up on himself, to have that conversation and to recognize like, all these people are in it for me, and I'm going to go myself in it, too. And to see that, taking responsibility for himself as a learner, and I see that frequently with a lot of our kids.
Are all the three elementary schools roughly similar? Or is there a significant difference in any of them? Who would, is there somebody that can speak to that? Are you doing it?
S-Backs? Yes.
Yeah. And are.
Is there a question, are they taking the S-Backs? Are they getting the same results? Or are they doing all the same of all the other stuff they've been talking about? What would, I don't.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure then what my question is, but if I sat through a presentation like this at Oak Grove, would it look about like this? Would these charts of 94% and 93% look similar? Or?
Yeah, I believe that certainly at Oak Grove, and just looking at the entire district data that we do at benchmark meetings, you're seeing growth across the, across the district. You know, some areas are, like they're showing tonight, are a little smaller, certain cohorts are struggling a little bit more, but there is, you know, that movement of growth. And we're very fortunate that, you know, three times a year, I know Bryn's very involved with. And we're very fortunate that, you know, three times a year, I know Bren's very involved with helping the district come together with all of the benchmark data that helps us to have our data meetings three times a year to talk about the, kind of the big picture and where we're at.
It's interesting that we have a, one of the poorest towns in the state. And made me wonder, maybe we don't teach economics very well or math or money or any of those things. Or, I mean, I don't know what all the oars are, but you have to think there must be some relationship to how well schools were educating kids and how well a town is doing, their own community.
Actually, in that article from the Atlantic that I sent around, it said that that's a really intuitive position, that people would think that that is correlated. And it actually isn't that correlated income with school quality and performance, but more to do with what kind of systems are in place within the town to help people gain economic stability. So I wouldn't really make that big of a leap from the fact that the poverty is high to say that there would be a correlation with something going on in the teaching of the schools.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, which of course leads one to the thinking that, given this knowledge, that in general, lower-income kids don't do as well in life as the higher-income kids be. And so there would need to be some kind of a focus on how to overcome that. What do we need to teach? Maybe it's not, maybe we aren't teaching everything that the kids need to know to create a stronger community that they live in. Of course, then you hear most kids leave the community and they never come back. But I really don't know the statistics on that.
So Spoon, you know, there are tremendous challenges in this town that we face, all schools face. The purpose of this presentation is I wanted the board to have a really clear look at the work that we're doing day in and day out, kind of a behind-the-curtain look. And we feel like we were in one place in 2013 and we're in a place now where we feel like we're a really innovative school. We feel like we're an upper echelon school. We feel like we can support any student that comes through our doors. It's not necessarily going to be reflected in all the data that we're looking at, especially if you're looking at that big scope data.
And you succeeded admirably.
Yeah, thanks. But the purpose was just to show how as a school community, you can build a system of support to change things. And that's what I hope is a big takeaway for you guys tonight. Because it's tremendously hard work and it's where we're going. It's what we're going to continue to do. You know, we're adopting core beliefs. You'll see them on the wall when you walk out. But we want to be an innovative school. We want to be an innovative community. And to do that, we've always got to be looking forward and adapting. So this presentation, five years from now, may be a lot different based on what our population is and who we're working with. And I think that's collectively philosophy that we've embraced, that... It's a clinical model. If doctors were still doing the same thing to cure cancer 20 years ago today, our death rates would be a lot higher. And I think as educators, we've got to have that same mentality. Continue to change, continue to develop, adapt, challenge each other. But build schools, build systems where we're giving every kid what they need. And I hope you have a better sense of Green Street School from tonight.
I do. And I am, in fact, very impressed. The, it's just the amount, the techniques and the concerns and the focuses. And there isn't anything that I didn't hear that was very, that was not very impressive. But it always comes down to, in the end, is anything changing in our communities and our society? Because education is where that all begins.
Sure. I like to believe with that group of where only 17% of kids could read at the beginning of fourth grade and we doubled that by fifth grade. I think we've changed those kids' lives. They're still working through their reading, they're still struggling. And as a teacher who, we have these kids for these, you know, pockets of time, it's sometimes hard to see that global view. And I'm sure it's not going to have that impact with every single child. But when I come to my work personally as an educator, I often see it as my service work. Like, this is my work in the world. And if I can convince this kid to pick his head up off the table today and try again, and if I can help that kid feel like a reader, that's the daily work that we're doing here every day to hopefully lay the foundation for these kids to go out in the world and be able to balance their checkbook or be able to manage their finances or be able to read their lease or be able to read their child's report card in a way that's going to hopefully, you know, build up our whole society. And we're only six and a half hours of the day of that social system within our community here. But I do think that there's a committed group of educators here and leadership and you as a board. And also I want to address the question about, you know, are similar things happening in the other town schools? I think we are so lucky to work in a district where there is excellence happening across the district and across the SU. There are so many supports and such a leadership and such drive. It feels like a privilege to work in this district, to have the supports that we have and to have the opportunity to learn from what's happening at Oak Grove and what's happening at Academy. And so just as an educator, as part of that system and as a person whose child is within that system, you know, there's days where it's really tough and there's days that we don't know how it's all going to suss out. But I do, I have to believe, if I'm going to come here and do this work every day, that it does make a difference. Everything, all of these connections and the skills that we're building with kids will filter out to make a difference. And to have that feeling of support and excellence throughout the district is the foundation for us, is the teaching team as well, I think.
Awesome.
And a thank you to you as a board for continuing to support financially, having the staff and the resources in place to make our schools great for all of these kids. For many, many of these students at Academy and Oak Grove and at Green Street. This is, this is home. This is the most stable, this is the most consistent adult. I mean, in working with kids for just two or three years, you could see their home and the adults that take care of them change five times. But we're still here. And I think that that does make a difference. And we'll continue to.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Zane.
So board, I think I can entertain a vote for Spoon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we ayeing?
Aye. I didn't know that was the last.
So that's one.
Yes, sir.
So we're going to actually recommit. Sorry, guys, we recommiting, we didn't know that there was one more thing that we actually wanted to do. So agenda items officially, agenda items should be sent to me by email if there's something that you want for the next one. And then we're recommiting for just a second.
So I just wanted to, just to inform the board of something and I wanted to share with you before you hurry anywhere else. And that is that I'm, there's a pretty good likelihood that this will be my last year at Academy. Because I am, I guess you could say, considering the possibilities of retiring next year and working at a less than full-time position in the district.
I am going to be bringing a proposal to the finance committee that one of the things that I've noticed in the last number of years when trying to hire administrators is that we have a very, very shallow pool. Our last hiring happened in an outlying town school. There were 10 total applicants, one of whom applies for every single job opening in WSESU, so was not a viable candidate. Two brand new. And we ended up interviewing three, one of whom dropped out and then left us with two others that had no elementary experience. We were able to tap a person that Andy had been working with. However, this person, as well as other principals in the SU, need support. And I can't think of a better person to be able to provide support to principals than Andy. And so I'm hoping that the finance committee and eventually the WSESU board will support a principal mentor position. And I'm hoping that Andy will consider that. It would be, we talked about very part-time, maybe 90, 90 total days. But it would be Andy's job to be the go-to person. And I know already Jerry and Mark contact Andy weekly.
Absolutely.
As well as many of the other principals. So I'm hoping to be able to continue to work with Andy on a part-time job and use his expertise over the next few years. It is considered professional development, so we're looking at possibly funding some of it through Title II A. And then see what else, where else we can get some funds for that.
So are we officially hearing a letter of, or hearing a...
I would say no.
Entirement?
No. I would say, depending upon how the WSESU board accepts this proposal. If they do, obviously we'd open it up to interview candidates. I can't think of a better candidate if Andy decides that that's something that he'd like to do. But we will follow protocol and procedure and policy and interview. If the board says nope, absolutely not, we would not be interested in this. Andy may decide he does want to come back for another year.
Or stay on.
Or stay.
So let's vote this down at the SU, then we can force you to stay at Academy.
Well, at this point, I just wanted to inform the board of this event. And so that you wouldn't, you know, I want you to hear it here first from me and not elsewhere. Word will soon get out, so...
It's being discussed at the SU Finance tonight, right?
It is not.
Oh, it's not?
Because I felt like I needed to be here and not there. So it's possible at your next board meeting, I will be there. And probably Julianne will be here.
Do you, do, do you envision that this position of, I don't know if that has a name, principal mentor would extend further than our district?
Mm-hmm. All WSESU.
All the, and, or even perhaps beyond if another, if a neighboring supervisory union wanted to call on...
That'd be up to Andy.
Andy's expertise. And that would be up to them, how they worked out payment. We would only pay for him to be here.
What did you think?
About this position?
Yeah, about how far it might expand. Yes, actually, you're a consultant, I guess, as you...
Well, I've got opportunities right now to do that. My choice is to do it in this SU. I've been here, I came here in 1990 to then the Bratton Union Junior High. And I feel like, you know, I'm a resident of Bratton, been resident since 1990 in Bratton. I feel that the district has been wonderful to me. This is where I would want to continue the next phase of my career, which is working with principals. And I'm doing a fair amount of that now. I've turned down opportunities to do that in other districts in the last year or so. So I wouldn't be looking to do it elsewhere. I would want to keep my focus here in this district.
Yeah, I don't expect any details, really.
I was just trying to answer your question.
Okay, any other discussions or shall we go through the motion of adjournment again? Seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're done.